Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us for the April 1st, April Fool's Day, Work Session of the Board of Supervisors. Roll call, please.
Mr. Holroyd?
Here.
Ms. Knoll?
Here.
Mr. Drury?
President.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Shepherd?
Here.
Madam Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We're continuing the work on the fiscal year 2026 budget, and we have several things that we will be talking about. And one of them will be the community support line items. And Dr. Walt Akers, who is head of the committee and has been head of the committees since its inception, is going to talk to us and explain to us how much they gave away to each of the places that apply.
Donated. Donated.
Recommended.
Well, he's going to tell us how much, yes, and then we will decide if we wish to give it. But it is recommended, you're right.
Oh, you need us to put it on there?
If you would. I'm not sure exactly what it is.
Yes, sir. I can do that. I think I can do it.
I was surprised you guys jumped right into it. Usually, there's some more fall deraw at the beginning, but it's lovely to see you all again, and I'm happy to be back this year. This year's committee was pretty much the same people as last year, except for District 5. David Allen's been with us for several years now. He moved out of the district and hasn't been replaced yet, so it was the four of us that made the recommendations this year. This year, we had, like last year, we had 18 organizations that requested funding. Several of them were new, and they fall into these sort of broad categories. And when you look at it, you'll see that yellow category up there, that's youth development services and that sort of thing. And we had an exceptionally high number of those, which I was really happy to see because, as you know, youth programs are really important. So what we did is we did the same program that we did last year, where each of us evaluate each of the grants, the grant applications. We look at their Form 990s from the Internet, and those are all available online, and we go through it, and we compare what they're doing to what their costs are for what they're doing, the number of people that they support within the county, as well as the number of people they support outside the county. And the other thing we look at that's always really important is how much money they're able to garner from other organizations beside going directly to the government for support. And so you'll see, we have charts as we get in there that show each one of these things and how these guys compare. I did want to begin by saying, we noted this year that you guys had taken the Williamsburg Meals on Wheels, the York County Meals on Wheels, and the Virginia Peninsula Food Bank and moved them up to regular county line items. We were very happy to see that because we know that they'll be well taken care of there, and those are extraordinarily good organizations that have done a lot of good work for the community, and we were happy that they were advanced. All right, so we'll start off with the American Red Cross, and they have a very large service area. And most of the stuff that they do is really, in this area, is locally focused on support for military people, especially emergency communications and things like that. They also, in the event there is a natural disaster here, they would provide shelter and spearhead the delivery of support to the area. We doubled, pretty much doubled what we gave them last year, but their impact in the area is not as critical as some of the other ones. I probably phrased that wrong. Their need for support to do their mission is not as critical as some of the other ones. So that's why we're not requesting as much money as we are would for some other places. The next one's up is the Arch of Greater Williamsburg, and these guys provide services to individuals with disability, and they give them quality-of-life instructions, and they serve 148 residents in York County. This year, they asked for $3,000, and we recommended the entire amount. We've recommended less in the past because we had those other organizations that needed more funding, but this year, we thought that these guys were certainly worthy of the support.
Is that primarily physical disabilities?
I think, I think a lot of it's emotional, not emotional. I'm not sure what the right term is anymore, but psychological disabilities, I think, may be the correct term.
Cognitive.
Cognitive. Yeah, they, it's a challenge to keep up with the right term, so it's that one.
All right, thanks.
And Avalon Center for Women and Children, again, this is, there's three of these in our community, and each one of them performs a critical role. And this year, we rebalanced funding a little bit. You'll see when we get to some of the later ones to try to bring these all pretty much into the same range of funding. These guys asked for 4,000, and we usually give them 100% of that because we had some additional funding this year and because of the people that had left, and because we wanted to try to move them up to be more balanced with the others, we increased the, what we recommended, to $4,665.
You were able to do that because the county took on some of the other?
That's correct, yes.
That's good.
And the other ones were, you know, really significant.
Meals on Wheels, yes.
Yeah. Bacon Street Youth and Family Services, this is another one of the programs that provides particularly support for young people and families with young people, and they provided 68 residents with crisis line assistance, emergency shelter, and camp counseling and legal advocacy. They usually ask for a higher amount than we can practically give because of their service area, but we did increase the amount we gave them this year, for the same reason as the last one. And that's the wrong way. CASA, Colonial CASA, they provide courtroom and community advocacy for children, and this year, they provide support for 25 kids in York County. We increased what we recommended for them a little bit this year as well. They're not, they're not the largest organization out there, but they do a very impactful job. The thing that they do, the things they do are important. This one is the Center for Child and Family Services. This is a new organization.
I just said, I recognize the name.
Yeah, this is, this is the first time they've applied, and they provide behavioral and mental health and financial counseling services to 105 York County residents this year. They have a fairly broad service area, as you can see, that includes a lot of Gloucester and James City County and Williamsburg and some, I believe, Isle of Wight. They also have done a yeoman's job of getting funds from outside organizations. You can see that they did quite well with that. Because they're a new organization, typically, we don't give new organizations the whole amount, even if we're immediately available, because we'd like to see how they perform year over year before we increase it.
Where are they located?
Their physical location, I'm not sure of. I'd have to look it up. That's not something I have on one hand.
Now, when you say new, you mean new to?
To us.
New to us.
How long have they, you know how long they've been in existence?
I don't have that with me, no, but it's.
New, but new to us.
Yeah, this is, they've been around a little while. Now, there's a couple of them that you're going to see that are pretty much brand-new, and I'll have some explanations for that when we get there, because when I first, you know, I'll explain that when we get there. I don't want to ruin the surprise. Community Brain Injury Service, these guys have been making application with us since the inception of the group. This year, we were able to give them full funding, and these guys provide really intensive therapeutic services to not a lot of people, but the service they provide is very intensive. So these are people with brain injuries and the like. So it's very, a very valuable service.
This one's new.
This one's new, and this is the De Good Foundation. And there's nothing bad I could say about this. I mean, you've all heard of Dolly Parton's Imagination Library? Well, these are the guys that are the local sort of distributors for that here, and they provide services to 945 York County children, which is, you know, pretty impressive. So again, because they're new, we didn't go as high as we might have. I'm not sure we're going to go a lot higher on this one in the future. It depends what the other people say, because I love reading, love children, making sure people are fed and safe is sort of a higher priority, but this, we were really happy.
This is something the Library Foundation could do.
They certainly could, yes.
Do they do physical distribution of books to people's homes or?
Yes.
Yeah.
To children up to the age of five.
Take them out to the people's homes and?
Then mail them.
Okay. And this guy literally, I think, if I'm not mistaken, this guy just started this, like, two years ago or something. He's, he's brand-new on the, on the program, and.
Quanta sponsored them last year in Williamsburg, so that kind of got their, got them started. I think the city or JCC has taken on the responsibilities for Williamsburg and JCC, but this is a request for York County.
Okay.
And it's based on a.
This is another new one, and this is a, this is similar to some of the other smaller food kitchens that we've had in the past, but these guys provide food, clothing, housewares, and stuff to people that may be economically insecure or maybe homeless. So they're actually doing a really good job up there. I think they're located in Williamsburg, but they provide service through the county, James City County, and Gloucester. And we recommended $4,815. They requested higher than that, but again, we want to look year over year. Grace Historical Church, these guys use the funding to maintain the stuff at the church. They have a lot of artifacts and things there, and they use the funding for that. They don't ask for a lot of money, but the money that they get does a lot of good work over there, keeping some of our treasures in the county intact. So we recommend a little more for them this year. Historical Virginia Land Conservancy, these guys, I'm not, I've not been able to exactly pin down the extent of what they do, but they seem to be advocates for the maintenance of historical lands.
Land property.
And to ensure that the properties around the York County watershed and Rappahannock River and the like, historical properties are maintained, and I think advocacy is sort of their main thing. In the past, we, we haven't funded them a lot, but we, we felt like it was still worth supporting them. So Hospice House, any of you that have been here in the past, you know how I feel about this. It's nothing more important than how we treat people as they're reaching the end of their life. These guys have done a stellar job forever with handling very, very difficult situations with people that are dying of cancer and the families that are trying to support them. We increased the amount that we offered to them this year significantly. So Natasha House, this is one of the three organizations that provide transitional and shelter and housing for battered women and children. We reduced them slightly from last year, and that was to try to bring them in line with the other women's shelters. They did have some programs over the past couple of years that were really worthy, but their request for outside funding has sort of diminished over the past year or so, and I would really love to see them be more aggressive in requesting support, particularly from Newport News and from some of the other localities. Transitions Family Violence Center is the last one of that type, and again, they provide emergency shelter and hotline support and advocacy for, this year, for 35 county residents, and we recommended the same amount for them, $6,700.
That's 35, this is residents of York County, and Natasha House, 55 residents of York County. So that's a smaller number for the same amount.
It is. I could go through it all, there's a lot of details there, but.
I trust you.
Okay. And this one, VFW, we kept them steady, and I'm thinking, I'm thinking next year or in the coming years, we may increase what we recommend to them. As you've all seen, the services to veterans organizations have had some cutbacks at the federal level. These guys provide people that fill out the forms for the veterans and make sure that they can get all this stuff put in. I, I want to see what happens in the future, but I think that is going to be a very critical capability to have in the community in the future, especially if the availability of these national sort of federal people to support it are gone. This is the Washington Rochambeau Revolutionary Route. This was hard to, I told you guys last year, this was hard to evaluate because they put in for the people they were supporting as incalculable, and I don't believe it's incalculable. So we went in and we counted up all the states and the residents of all the states that they're providing the services in, and what percentage of people would be supported, and came up with numbers that are entirely made up, but they got an equation behind them. So they're calculable, and they're reproducible.
And they're very active here in York County.
Yes, so they, they requested a little more this year than last year, but we, we didn't go quite that far. We kept it, we gave them a little more than we recommended last year, but I think, depending on what happens next year in 2026 with all of the stuff that's going on, we, you guys may want to look at that in particular.
I think so.
For that one year, because I think it may be worth special consideration.
Mrs. Knoll?
They actually have sent us a letter. It will be in your Friday correspondence package, and they've made a request.
They have?
Yes, ma'am.
I would be surprised if they didn't.
Are they on what additional activities they'll be doing for?
They did talk about some of the extra things that they would be interested in, the county helping them sponsor as well.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I think, like I said, for next year, I think they might be worth a little special attention. I just skipped somebody. And when I first saw it, I said to myself, William and Mary, those guys don't need any money. They've got plenty of money. Well, it turns out that this, this group has got a very targeted activity. And as I read about it, I really liked it. So they're trying to set up a tutoring program for children in the county in the Head Start program. So some of these guys that, that would otherwise not get the kind of one-on-one attention that would make them successful in school, these guys are putting together tutors. And they're going to put people out there to, to give these guys advanced training and, and reading and the like. And I think that, once I read it, I thought it was just an extraordinary program.
Have they been in existence? I mean, right now it says tutored 40 children. Are they actually tutoring 40 children at this time, or is this their aim?
That, I think that is their aim for next year.
Okay.
And, but they do have a program they've already started in James City County and some in York County for high school students, which was mentioned on their application. But I thought the amount they were asking for was modest, and I think it would be very impactful.
Question though, why are we funding a foundation?
We all, the county often funds, our funds foundations. Foundations form themselves as 501(c)(3) so that they can not be taxed on the money that's coming in. And just because you call yourself a foundation, it's simply a non-stock corporation.
Yeah, and just, I'm used to foundations doling out money. Why, why would we be putting money into a foundation so they can turn around?
Well, so I'll give you as an example, the Yorktown Foundation. So I'm a director on that. The Yorktown Foundation exists specifically to be an umbrella for all these other things. The CYC, the Lighted Boat Parade, a lot of the art on the Riverwalk. We really don't do a lot of things independently in the Yorktown Foundation, but we provide the insurance, the legal services, the annual tax returns and the like for all these other things, so they don't have to worry about it. And the county does fund us to a certain extent to pay for our accountants and whatnot. And, you know, you get all this other volunteer activity out of it. So I think this would be a good example of that.
Okay. I have not yet seen any tutoring of Head Start children in Griffin Yates.
Not yet.
So I, so I'd be interested in seeing.
Well, don't forget, we don't only have children at Griffin Yates, we have them in the.
But I would see it reported there from the other schools.
So this, yeah, this may be something they're planning to do next year. I think the money they specifically said was to pay for somebody to supervise the tutors, which were going to be high school students, I think, or college students. I, I can't recall. I have to look through their application again.
It's worth it for the trial.
Worth it for a trial, but we need to make sure they actually execute if they're to come back next year.
Well, that's, that's the thing. If you've, if you've got sort of an inside line on seeing what they're doing and how they're performing, I'd love to hear back from you, because I really am not out there in all these communities things. I mean, some of them, but not all of them.
Doug, what's the enrollment this year? Forty kids got to be pretty much all of them, right?
No, no, the enrollments, 87.
Okay, okay.
You got that right?
Nice, so about half of them, okay.
Of which about two-thirds are at Griffin Yates. And I would have expected to have seen some of the tutoring there.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
And then Williamsburg Faith in Action. This one provides transportation and services and, and well checks for the, for mostly seniors in that area. And most of their stuff's in York, York, or James City County and Williamsburg, but they do have some service in York County. So these guys are like the Meals on Wheels in that respect. They make it possible for, for people that are older and alone to continue to live alone, and they check on them to make sure they're okay. And, you know, that, that's a very valuable service. So we increased them slightly this year as well.
This is, this is faith-based, whereas Meals on Wheels is not. So, but they do the same thing, basically.
Yes, well, not completely, because Meals on Wheels does do the well checks and all this. These guys go a little beyond that, but the food service is the main thing that Meals on Wheels does, which is absolutely critical, yeah.
Faith in Action do have mini buses, and they do a lot of transportation to Centerra and other places.
I guess if you say transportation, that's, no, I think that's great.
And so that's all of them for this year. So we did have $127,827 worth of requests this year. The amount that we just recommended was $62,080, and that's because you kept it steady with what was last year, and we went over a little bit last year to support a couple of groups. This is pretty much the breakdown you see. And as you go through it, you can go back and see that these colors are the same as the first ones on the wheel. So it shows the focus areas.
Okay, our, our contribution is $70,000?
Sixty, or it's actually $62,080 this year.
Oh, okay. I thought it was a dollar of.
It's the Arts Commission.
What?
That's the Arts Commission, just $70,000.
Yes.
Last year, we had discussion on Heritage Humane and the other animal care groups. That's, that's next.
Yeah, Brian's going to present that portion of.
I was looking forward to it.
I was going to say, I, I hadn't heard nothing about that.
These are people, not animals.
Yeah.
I forgot to tell Walt, he's doing my presentation as well.
Yeah, I haven't, yeah, nobody mentioned that to me. But yeah, the, yeah, this was a, a really good group of people this year. And the thing is, I wouldn't worry so much about the difference in the funding between the Arts Commission and between this. And the reason I say that is you guys continually move these critical organizations up to the main county's budget. So it's really not apples to apples when you look at that.
Okay.
So this is the third year in a row we've gone down on HLVC funding. And I guess the message I'm hearing is they need to do a better job of presenting what it is they're doing that's impactful and helping the community.
HLVC?
Historic Land Conservancy. Virginia Land Conservancy.
Yes.
Because it was 2,000, then 1,800, and then 1,500, and now 1,300.
Okay, so I.
I have a good memory.
Yeah, I, I'll be honest, I usually recommend zero for that, because I am unclear on what's happening.
So it's a clarity of mission that they need to do a better job of.
Which one are you talking about, please?
Historic Virginia Land Conservancy.
I've opened up, yeah, I know. Okay, I'm thinking the same thing.
I'm just, I, I see the application, but I don't understand what they're accomplishing.
Aren't they the ones that got the, I thought they got the Battlefield up there. Got help with that, and then they, over the, over the last couple of decades, we've give developers of various reasons, we've gifted land to them, and they hold the land, and then that kind of stuff.
That's what they do.
And then they, then they'll take and swap land and make a bigger piece and stuff like that.
That's the Battlefield Trust up there.
Battlefield Trust up there. I know it's one of the land conservancies.
Same concept of.
Yeah.
You just need to know what, what their mission is or what they actually. This is Protects, Protects and Preserves, yes.
What I'm hearing is they need to do a better job of presenting their mission to be able to get their funding increased.
Some clarity.
It's the only one that consistently went down, and the only one this year that's gone down.
Have you shared that message with them?
Generally, we don't provide feedback to any of these organizations. They, we post our annual recommendations online, and we sort of expect them to, to watch this.
It's up to them.
Yeah, and get the information.
To figure it out.
So you have, they haven't reached out to you to ask for?
No, the only, the only people that have ever really reached out to me have been the Meals on Wheels people, and they come to my house, and.
For meals?
No, no. We want more money, and I said.
I'll feedback. They're in my district.
Okay.
Well, I can't thank you enough for another year of good service to the county.
My pleasure, and I wish you guys well with the budget this year.
Well, it's always good to see you. Thank you very much, Walt.
Good seeing you. See you guys.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Appreciate it.
Have a good one. Take care.
Next on the agenda is compensation and benefits.
You missed one.
Not quite.
Brian's going to do the second part of.
Oh. It doesn't say here. I'm off it.
It's not on this one, but yes, that's why I was asking.
It says right here, Brian. Oh, it's not there. Okay.
It's not here.
Yes.
Rose is next.
Rose is next is what I have.
This is the second part.
Your squeezy name.
This is the second part of the outside agency funding.
Okay.
And regional community support. I will try to be brief and roll through this, so if you have any questions, please stop me. You'll see a lot of these as you have in the past. So just a quick reminder of the board's teaching priorities. And we have tried to break these categories as we do with all the expenditures kind of into one of these areas and categories that are your board priorities. So here's a top level of the categories and where the requests were. And then I'll go through each of these categories in detail, which you see. A little bit more than last year was 8.5. We had requests of 10.3, and we're proposing $9.8 million worth of funding in these. These are a combination of agencies, as you'll see as we go through this, that are, the recommended amounts are based on a contract or agreement or a formula, and then there are others that are not. Knowing that the budget this year was going to be an opportunity to be creative, we looked at all of the organizations that were not by contract, and we mostly level-funded this. We did not give them increases, because we just knew it was going to be a tight budget. So that's kind of the philosophy that we have when we look through these. So here's just graphically how these go out. It's not as pretty as Walt's chart. I'm a little jealous. But it, it does show, you know, there again, where the county's priorities are. 40% to public safety, 17% to educational opportunities. We've got economic development, communications and customer service, and environmental stewardship. So that's how the percentages break out.
Okay, environmental stewardship with a focus on resiliency. Explain me.
Conservation, water conservation and soil, those things, some of the things there's a.
That comes under that.
Yeah, there's a host of things that fall under these TPC.
Just a big bag.
That you'll see, yes.
Okay, I'd like to know what they were.
You'll get those.
See through the page, I'll find it.
We'll get to a few minutes, we will.
Okay.
So here is the first side, exemplary public safety and where we are with the different categories. There's just a slight increase there. Most of that is, is based on the county of community connections, which is contracted, and also the regional Merrimack Center, animal shelter and all. And this is where the Humaric, hey, main society is, Mr. Paul Royd, so.
Are they the same as you did in 25?
Yes, because that's one of the things that's not, not, we don't have a contract or an agreement. We have an, an agreement based on the service. That's a very small portion of what we, of the contributions, less than around $7,000. So the rest of that is above and beyond. So since the board gave them additional money last year, we kept it level-funded, as we did, as you'll see with a lot of groups, that we don't have a contract with.
Mia, can we back up to that agency slide?
Okay.
Hey, tell me about the first one there.
That, that is the adult probationary function.
Still doing the stages where you step them through.
That's by, and that's by contract. It's based on usage, so that's why that's gone up.
So these are not, okay, there's, I know I see PDC, I know what that is, but the others are just specific names. And Merrimack Center and Animal Shelter. So these are governmental, we shared responsibilities with the other ag, with other governments, and this is our share?
Some, yes, some of these are, like the regional jail, the animal shelter, you know.
With contracts, you have to pay.
Yeah, and you see, that one went down because of.
Which one?
Usage.
Animal shelter. It's, it's based on usage.
Usage.
Okay, so this, but this is some formal agreement we have with, with this agency representing all the regional, various regional governments.
Correct.
Right. Is it safe to assume everything that's contractual is a shared fundraiser?
Yes.
Let's go back to Heritage Humane. No, I, I expected them to be about 20% of the total, based on the number of animals they handle for York County. And, and they're still coming in short of that. Now, Ms. Alaska made a presentation to us last year, and we ended up adding to her funding, because she was considerably below what would have been the target or the amount based on the number of animals served. So I'm a little surprised to see the flat line this year, because she came in with a, with a request that matched the number of animals being served. And I would have expected the number to be at least up.
Well, there's only, the, the way we understand, or I understand, that agreement is there's only about, based on the animals, it's only about $7,000.
Yeah, based on the animals. There was a, in their application, there was 100 animals that they served.
Yes.
So, which I, I don't recall it being a lot more, but I'd have to look.
So this list, I think it was, it's not confusing, but I'm just trying to focus it a little bit. Under the PDC, the medical, the Metropolitan Medical Response System is a very specific aspect of the PDC that it supports, okay? But we provide other funds for the PDC on, based on our agreement as a member of the PDC.
Yeah, and they're in one of these, this is the bucket for public safety. So there are other buckets that you'll see those funds in.
So you're going to have, what are things like, you're going to be other agencies that we could get here?
Teresa, coming back on that point, it's 100, 100 dogs in this kennel at a time. That's not, that's not the total for York.
What they sent in their thing, that we asked.
Yesterday.
How much, I, I didn't speak to them personally.
Okay.
Their application that they submitted said that they had 100, they served 100 York County animals. And that's what was.
At a time.
That's what it was based at.
At a time. That's why I'm.
They can't handle.
Capacity, do you think?
Yeah. It is their capacity. I'm, I'm just surprised that this number continues to drag on the low end.
Well, it's increased a lot over the last several years.
We made a step change last year, and that, and that recognized only half the gap. That was the whole discussion last year, that they should come in with a full plan this year and get them up to the full level of funding. I would have expected 20% of the total between the two animal groups. So for 203 on the one, I would have expected 49 on the other.
So then are you suggesting a $7,000 change on heritage?
I would, because we.
I mean, that's what this is about. If you have a feel for this and, and you'd like to make a change, that's why we're sharing this with you. So if you'd like to do that, I think we, we will find a way to accommodate that.
So I'm going to understand your, your concerns. That was a problem.
What my concern is they're underfunded relative to the regional animal shelter.
Did they come in with a request?
Yes, a request was for 55.
How many dogs, I'm, I'm confused on this.
So, okay, I see you're talking about.
How many dogs are York County dogs that they care of? How many dogs are James City County dogs? How many dogs are Williamsburg dogs? You add them all together.
That's in the application, but the York County share was.
But what I want, that's what I'm trying to figure out is what is York County's share of it?
I would have to go back into my emails and pull that report out.
Okay.
So it was a sizable number.
Teresa's trying to research that right now.
Yeah, I've got her lab. Money, I just, I didn't understand the.
Yeah, I just, I don't care.
Request. I'm just looking at the number up there, so.
We could let Teresa take a look. She's trying to look at their application right now. When she finds it, we could come back to this.
Sure, okay, let's move forward.
Put a pin in it, put a pin in it.
Right. Okay, educational opportunities.
CDR.
The big, big change there is, over what was requested, was CDR requested $75,000 for operation and then a capital contribution of $500,000. They also did a similar request to James City County for $500,000. $250,000 for the city of Williamsburg, and $125,000 to the city of Pecosa. The CAOs of the region got together and discussed the application and the process and agreed to fund it in their operating budget, or the budget request this year at 10%. So we did add the $50,000 to the $75,000 for operation, and that's why we proposed the 125. The other localities, as we understand it, are going to do similar and propose that at ten percent.
What are the capital projects they're looking?
Their renovation. Yeah, I remember that now.
That's what it is.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah, I remember that now, okay.
So, you know, there were other, other agencies, as you'll see in a bit.
What you're doing is you're taking the amount that they're asking, but you're spreading it out over length of time. Is that correct?
Well, it'll be up for consideration each year. You know, we knew this budget was a, not a particularly good budget. There were other people that had capital requests that we didn't fund at all, so.
No.
Right.
Delicate, thank you for joining us.
The other ones are all really contractual agreements, or we did the Peninsular Community College, we level funded that, which was their request. So value-driven economics development, you can see a whole host of these as, as they come along. A lot of these were either Hampton Orange Alliance, workforce development. So WADA was the big increase there. And several things happened there at WADA to cause that large of increase. It is contractual. So the frequency of the routes increased on routes one and two, which is Lee Hall Route and the Richmond Road Route. And the way the federal funding and the state funding comes, when you make a change, they don't calculate any costs for that or subsidize any costs of that for the first two years. So we have the complete cost of that. We also had Colonial Williamsburg withdrew from the authority as a, and basically turned their bus service over to WADA. And so they, they are no longer in the bus business and so they are no longer funding buses, so WADA absorbed that. So James City County's increase, our increase is about seventy percent. James City County's increase this year is eighty five percent. City Williamsburg is at sixty five and Newport News's requested increase is a hundred percent. So everybody got an increase now. You know, once we get to the second year of this, we'll get additional state funding and then that, that'll reduce our contribution. It's just the way the federal system works.
So our funding increased by seventy percent. And that's because Williamsburg opted out?
Well, Colonial Williamsburg opted out, that's some of that.
Right.
And then increased route, increased the frequency of routes, so that increased the cost. And like I said, we have to, we have to incur that cost for the two, first two years.
Yes.
All of the route mileage is based on, they take the whole system and you've got X number of miles in York County, X number of miles in Williamsburg, you know, so that's, they calculate all of that out to determine the percentages of the cost.
But did ridership by York County residents go up by seventy percent?
No, but it did increase. So the, the two thousand twenty four actual riders was three hundred and thirteen thousand, York County riders. They're projecting in F Y twenty five it to go to three hundred and ninety one thousand and in F Y twenty six, four hundred and forty thousand. Because a lot of that is, the route in Lackey right now, it's about a ninety minute turnaround. So they're going to decrease that to sixty. So that right there, well, should increase ridership by a third because you can count on it more. It'll be more frequency of stops.
And shooting their funding only go up thirty percent and not seventy percent?
Well, part of that is you've lost the funding from Colonial Williamsburg and we have to cover the entire cost the first two years. All the other costs are calculated based on the state formula and what they reimburse this.
The contract says we have to absorb.
Yes. Are we paying C W anything? We don't pay C W, no, they don't pay us either, though. I was just looking to see if there was a place I could cut.
Yes.
So the other thing that WADA did for us, if, if you remember, we worked with them on our trolleys. And four or five years ago, federal government came out with a parrot, the paratransit rule and basically said anybody within a quarter or three quarters of a mile of a bus route, you had to offer paratransit service and basically pick them up at their house and take them to where they needed to be. And so we basically had to set up a call service. So we contracted, the cheapest way for us to do that was to contract with WADA to do it. And we did, we reached an agreement with them and it was seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for that service because it's three hundred and sixty five days a year, somebody can call, they can get a ride within twenty four hours. We just could not have stood that up.
What do they get a ride to?
Where's the doctor's office or?
Doctor, anywhere that's on the route or, you know, they can get, if you're disabled, they can transport you to the route. So they can pick you up for your home, but then get you to the bus stop that's near you and then you.
And they're supposed to get them in from the bus stop back home?
Mm-hmm, yeah. So, but we contracted with them, so this, last year when we talked about the contract, we actually got them to, to pick up that cost and not charge us anymore. So that is saving us seventeen thousand five hundred dollars a year because they're just doing that service. Because in the two years, we got three or four phone calls for that service.
How far south do they come?
They come to Yorktown. So you remember there was a demonstration route, pre-COVID, there was a demonstration route that they had approved a three-year grant for to go all the way down seventeen to Walmart. And then COVID hit and they could not get to drivers.
Right.
And then they lost the federal grant because they just could not, they're just now getting back to full service of drivers, so they lost that grant.
But we had that initially.
We had that in the nineties and it did not, because it's just, it's just out Route seventeen. So there again, how do you get from your house in Dare or Grafton or all the way to Route seventeen?
Right, right, right. Which, right.
So that's, that's part of the problem, that's part of the, you know, the talk of sidewalks and trails and things like that, those spurs, you know, if you can get to the main artery, which is seventeen, then you have a lot more options. So we, they will look at maybe putting that back down the road, but, but that was a federal grant that we did lose.
Brian, if you're going to change slides, Teresa's ready to answer.
Okay.
Heritage Main question.
All right, Heritage Main, on their application, they say that their total number of animals served at twenty four was sixteen eighteen, eighty nine being York County. They estimate twenty five to be sixteen fifty with a hundred being York County and twenty six sixteen seventy five being a hundred York County. When I look at their application of the other localities that they serve, eighty nine are York County, this passed last year, twenty four, five hundred and seventy eight are James City County, three hundred and forty are Williamsburg. The funding provided for that was forty two five for York County, one sixty one, three seventy four for James City County and thirty five thousand dollars for Williamsburg.
So we're in line with, we're in line with the other communities.
Well, Williamsburg is three times the number.
Lot more per animal, but yeah.
So what's the bottom line?
Bottom line, they serve about a hundred of our animals all year long, is what they're estimating next year.
So we leave it alone.
So, right.
Good.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
This is a continuation of the other areas in economic development. The big one here obviously is the full year of the Historic Triangle Recreational Facilities Authority from four hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand. And you can see most of these that were, were not contractual, we did level fund even if they requested more.
What is museum?
The tall ship committee, is that to pay for ships coming in?
That's to pay for ships coming in. And we typically, we've got that up to fifteen thousand and then they bank that if they don't spend it, if we don't have a ship come in. A tall ship, though, a, a nice tall ship, if you're going to pay them to come in, you're going to spend that in one weekend.
Right, Captain Cross does a great job of negotiating those rates.
He does a wonderful job, he's got a wonderful relationship, he's very good at knowing that ship X is over in Norfolk this weekend and two weeks from now he's going to be in Baltimore. Hey, if you want to come, you know, we can help you out, we can set you up and you can instead of floating around Chesapeake Bay, come here, work and do some free deck tours. We'll let you do some paid tours and some paid sales and it, it's a win-win for everybody. So he does a great job of recruiting those ships.
We'll get you a pub burger.
Get you a pub burger?
Set you up.
Yeah, so between that and, and the, the large ships that are, the yachts, if you will, he's, he's got a lot of contacts with those and does a really good job of, of recruiting those ships.
Who's wanting to ship in now?
Ship came in this morning, was the first one of the season, from American Cruise Line came in this morning. So here, most of these, except for Colonial Behavioral Health. Now Colonial Behavioral Health did ask for a half a million dollars for a capital grant for their facility at Eastern State and we did not recommend money for that, just obviously didn't, didn't have that there. There you see the sixty two oh eight is the Waltz Committee that he just talked about, so that's kind of where that is allocated, but then they divided.
I have a question, Colonial Behavioral Health, do we have a lot of clients?
Yes.
We do, that's just all I'm asking.
Lackey, we, we did level fund that, so.
Same with the alcohol safety. And there's the community foundation. And there's a heart district.
Health district.
Yeah, well, I don't have my glasses.
That's okay.
So you gave them what they requested?
And that, that's, we, there's a formula base for the health district, based on, on the.
Yes, okay.
And then the remainder of these, you could see where, as, as Mr. Aker talked about, we pulled the three Meals on Wheels programs out. There is the money for the Arts Commission that we're recommending it, at seventy five thousand. Old Town Medical Dental Center, we did level fund, similar to Lackey.
I wonder what the clientele is for Old Town Medical Dental?
It, it varies, I think this month, last month it was eleven percent York County, I believe.
Typical, it's around fifteen percent.
Yeah, fifteen, a couple of years ago it was a lot less than that, but it is.
And their total numbers are up.
And then, so here the soil, Colonial Soil and Water, we did recommend an increase for that. And talking with their agency, in the last few years, they've given out over a hundred thousand dollars in grants to York County residents to help soil erosion and conservation. So we did feel that that was a, a good investment for that.
I got a question about this.
Go ahead.
Isn't there other organizations we could put this in? I could ever, I mean, I still sort of know that organization does, it's something from back in the depression era.
And they have elected officials, they have elected officials?
I know, they got two elected officials and, or two positions. And I know George, when George got on there, he pushed hard to get, and, you know, get Chad to want to put money into the program, but for the life of me, I, I really don't understand what they're doing.
Well, and, and that's the thing, when we, we've had conversations with them about the number of grants that they've given, or the amount of money that they've given to residents.
You can't even get people at the state to tell you what they do.
What they do is shoreline projects, living shoreline projects, erosion projects, et cetera. That's my understanding of what they do.
They, they don't do the projects, they provide funding, grant, grant funding for somebody else to do homeowners, I guess, do the project.
Why do we have that under like the Wetlands Board or Chesapeake Bay Board or something like that?
I can't, I can't answer that. But I would tell you.
They give these people money, period, that's what I don't understand.
That Brian is.
I couldn't figure out what they did.
I had two phone calls over it since we put this together and both representatives from Soil and Water. And what they told me was, is over the last three years, they've given out more than two hundred thousand dollars worth of grants and they felt like the minimum contribution for any of the localities that use their services is twenty five thousand dollars.
We use the services because they came in, we gave money, they go down and found it, what take to do? I mean, it was, it was, it was, I mean, it was, it was a mission, looking for something to do.
Well.
So I'm not quite sure, understand what they're doing.
What I'd be, what I could do for you is I can have them contact you directly if you can have that conversation.
I would love to hear what they, what rationale, what they're doing.
Sure.
Because I mean, if we're just paying somebody that lives on the water to, to improve their property, I have a problem with that. Okay? And we got people that get in trouble with the Wetlands Board because they go out and, and they try to use concrete or whatever to, to support the banks and whatever, okay? So if these guys got a real mission, I don't, I don't have a problem with it, but I do have a problem with this, we continuing to give these folks money for what? Okay, I don't really understand it.
We'll try to get that cleared up for you.
Staff that goes out and does shoreline rest, what is it, repair, restoration, stuff like that, why don't we give, give ourselves a grant and we can go out and do it that way? These things are expensive. So I'm saying I just need to know that I would, I don't have, the history of this has always bothered me and I went along with it because Chad and George said that they were going to come up with some good, good, good work with it. To this day, I still don't know what they're doing.
I will have them call you.
All right, thank you.
My understanding, I talked to one of them on the board and they, York County, they give more grants out to York County than any jurisdiction around.
That's because we give them money.
Well, we've given them five thousand dollars.
Yeah, we used to never give them any money, period, because we couldn't figure out what they did.
Yeah, but the, the issue is, they're saying if York County doesn't want to kick in to help with the projects and Williamsburg is willing to kick in, then they can go help with Williamsburg and that's going to put the burden on.
Is that blackmail?
York County.
No, there's no burden on the county. There's never been a burden on the county, yes.
And the residents, what I'm saying, the residents that are looking to get these grants.
Yes, I'm calling, I'm calling, I appreciate it.
Do we know the other localities that provide them funding?
No, we'd have to find out.
Williamsburg, I know is one of them.
Williamsburg, James City, Andy Gloucester. We got a, we got a. You should be doing this presentation.
Next year, Teresa's up.
I just happen to have the paperwork here. It says the amount of funding provided in twenty five, York County five, James City County sixty two four fifty, Williamsburg eight, Hampton five, Charles City nineteen five and New Kent twenty four four fifty.
So was that six or seven localities?
Two, three, six.
And the highest was a hundred twenty five thousand.
James City County is sixty two four fifty.
Sixty two, fifty two, okay.
Hey, fog study, we're studying fog?
I'm sure that H R S D is probably fatsoas in Greece.
Yes, it is.
I got that, I got.
You gotta capitalize that. Not a word.
I can't remember, I remember.
Fatsoas in Greece, I remember.
Last time, but capitalize that, that's, that's a.
I'd probably go halfway on that Colonial, on the Soil and Water.
Okay.
Rather than all the way, based on what I heard the other communities providing, I wouldn't go all the way to twenty five.
H R fog.
Okay.
That's fine. I'll, I'll still have.
I'm sorry, I missed that part of the conversation.
Just based on what the other communities were contributing to Soil and Water, I wouldn't go to twenty five, I'd go to fifty.
My, my whole concern is that.
I understood that.
Forever, in Virginia and the South, it all stems from the depression era, the soil, all this stuff, and there are places that really use these guys, okay? Especially in the farming.
Farming uses.
Year, they get, they, all of a sudden they're here and we happen to be in their area and we're more of a metropolitan area, so it, it doesn't really necessarily fit. And so twenty years ago, I tried to figure out their whole chain all the way up to the governor, which is very convoluted and it's not there, okay? So, so then they came up with this idea that maybe they could do some work with going out finding these projects, but I, but I, every year, all I see is money going their way and I don't know what it's being used for.
And your point's taken, if it's doing. And your point's taken, if it's doing shoreline restoration on personal property, is that the best use of tax funds versus, you know, farmland restoration? I guess we, we need to understand.
Well, if you had a farm, and you want to figure out how to plow the fields, or what, what grass to plant for the cattle, how to, how to harvest crops, and so that you can rotate crops and stuff like that, that's a great, that's a great thing that these people would do, it's almost like the four H in a way, okay? But on a much bigger scale. Just not really sure what these guys are doing, that's all.
Those are all the slides that I have, so I'd be happy to answer any questions, or get out of the way so you can continue on with the meeting.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Before, and before we get to the tab, let's see. Rose, you're doing compensation benefits, right? But before that, I'd like to introduce Delegate AC Cordoza. Just say, we're very happy to have you join us, and good luck, is it tomorrow?
It is tomorrow.
We all have our fingers crossed.
I, I, I assure you, I'll be moving in a way that your county needs, get as much money as possible. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Okay, Rose, you're up.
Yes, ma'am.
Candy is the fuel we need, isn't it? See, I want my eyeballs too. Can't live without your eyeballs. Okay, if y'all are ready, I shall begin.
Please do.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. As you may recall, each year, Human Resources comes before you to do a presentation on compensation and benefits. It is my pleasure this evening to come before you and share information on where we are and where we're headed in these two arenas. More copies of the slides?
We need copies.
I don't have copies for you right now. We'll email them to you tomorrow.
I apologize, I will get those to you all. In this agenda, as you can see, we're going to give you an overview of not only our compensation condition, we're going to also share with you what's happening around us and discuss what that means to York County. Then we're going to dive into an overview of our benefits, and we'll break down where we currently are, and where we're going to head into the 2026 plan year. So let's begin with compensation. Members of the board, we do realize that this presentation is going to add to the complexity of your decision as a board in deciding what to do with this budget.
Thank you.
We really do understand, many of us are very.
You can do anything on purpose, I understand.
We really.
See how good you understand.
We do, oh, we've done this way too long, so we do understand. But it is important for us to share this information with you to factor into your decision. We are all on the same team, we are all trying to share and accomplish the same goal of providing these great services that we do to our community and to our citizens, so we do understand. But you know, like everything else, that comes with a cost, and we're going to show you today what that cost looks like for York County, so that you can factor that into your decisions, okay? So first, as we talk about the total compensation package, this is just to give you an idea, and, and you know all this, we have to be marketable, we have to be competitive in order to retract, to retract, to recruit and retain certain employees to come to York County. And so when you have that, you have to consider the climate that we're in, and this is really important for us, because you can't ignore it. We are in a climate where we are battling inflation, as you all know, I mean, all the rising costs, we're battling that, and people have to be able to live, and that cost of living is very impactful. We are battling nationwide recruitment challenges, we are battling staying competitive in the market, we're battling the high cost it takes to get people to come here, and it's happening and increasing so aggressively that you're just trying to keep up. These are the real life things that are happening in the climate that every locality is dealing with, and we're all trying to attain the same people, and we're shooting for the same type of candidate. So this makes it a little more challenging for us, and so what we want to do is kind of show you why this is so important, and why the recommendation that Mr. Bellamy has made to you all for the proposed GWI is so critical for you to really keep in the front of your minds as you consider this budget. We're going to show you kind of where we stand in the market, and hopefully that will help you to understand where we are. The other piece that we want to make sure we share with you guys as we talk about, not only their recruitment side of it, but we're also going to dive into the retention side of it and what that can cost for us as well, okay? So this slide is just to kind of show you the market outlook, where do we stand? And it's really important for us to share with you in that big blue cloud, all the aggressive compensation offers that we are battling, and all localities are battling these. So between higher starting salaries, signing bonuses, implementation of pay studies, proposed general wage increases, step increases, career ladders, slotting people by experience, these are all things that localities are jumping out with, and we have to maintain, and we are behind in a lot of these, which is why I put lagging in competitiveness, and we'll go into that in a little more detail in these slides, so you can get a true understanding of where we are. And then, as I was sharing earlier, the cost of what it takes to get people now, it is insane how much that has risen, and you have to do it to get that good talent. And so then, when you pay that much money to get people so you can fill your vacancies, you then are left with, what do you do with your existing staff and that internal equity and that compression that you create by bringing new hires in at a higher cost? And that's the retention side of it, so you can't really ignore one side of the coin over the other. So these are real things that we're challenged with as we look at the market, which is again why Mark has come out with that proposed GWI, and.
Rose, before you leave that slide, I don't see merit increases anywhere on that page, we've certainly talked about that in here.
We do.
So I'm, I'm a little bit perplexed that we have all of that against us, but we're not looking at what we've already discussed in terms of improving our competitiveness. Can, can I ask you if we can park that and come back to it? Certainly. Before we finish the, before we press presentation, because I think there's a place that it fits naturally, and, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. But it was obviously missing from that page. Yes, sir.
Okay, we can certainly go into that. Okay, so this slide kind of shows you the market impact on our compensation increases. What we're trying to show you here is, as we looked at the average proposed general wage increase across our market, it's three percent. As we look at average increases of localities that have done compensation studies and implemented them, and I'll show you some more of that on another slide, those are the ranges by which they have implemented and funded compensation studies. And then you see the plus sign, on top of that, you've got localities that have step increases, and they're also funding.
You said that, okay, so you, you said that was the cost?
This is how much they have given compensated employees within that range.
Result of the cost of the studies, okay.
Yes, sir. And then, as you can see, you take all of those into consideration, and then the proposed general wage increase that Mr. Bellamy made of our four percent, five hundred, that really just gets us even close to being in the game. And so that's why it's so critical that we, we have to really understand where we sit. The last time we did a compensation study in York County was 2016, but we did not fund it. So again, we are really behind when it comes to that, and then if I could show you this next slide.
I'll record.
Yes, sir.
I don't understand the three bullet points of the middle, the three, the three different ranges.
Three different localities.
Three different localities and ranges that they have funded.
We just decided not to name.
Okay, okay, that's where you lost me.
It's important for you to know, we'll, we'll share that information with you.
No, it's enough to know that you're talking about three different localities.
Yes, sir.
Well, and I think the, the middle one, the zero to twenty, that's got to be merit-based or something.
It's a, those are strictly funding for compensation studies, so we haven't even factored in all the increases for merit, GWI, step, that's just one category of the compensation study. And it ranges because you have different layers of how much you have to catch up, so to speak, when you do compensations.
I would bet that was market, market job shift, they looked at each job and said, well, this job is right on target, zero percent, this job will weigh off, so we're going to bump, we're going to move that twenty percent to get it in line with, with the market.
Yes, sir. That is very likely, yes, sir, that's how those, that's why there are ranges, yes. Okay? So then you take this slide. Now, these are the localities that have recently conducted compensation studies, and then the bottom shows you the ones that are currently in progress. As you can see here, this is just about every surrounding locality except us.
Yes.
So the bottom line is, we just take from all the rest because they've already done it?
You should say something like that.
The leftovers?
Right.
The ones that can't fill.
Download them all, ChatGPT, summarize, we're done.
Yeah, they can fill all their vacancies, and we'll take what's left. Yes, and so we wanted to make sure we showed you this impact, because this is why, you know, I've made the recommendation to Mr. Bellamy that we do need to really consider doing a comp study here in York County very, very soon, as soon as we can, and that we can afford it, and that we have the ability to fund it as well. Obviously, as we did in 2016, it doesn't make sense to do one if we can't fund it. But this adds to the complexity of us being behind, and so we wanted to make sure you saw this slide to see where we are, because this is real stuff.
But the bottom line is, I'd sooner fund the employees than pay for a compensation study. If I had to put my money one place or the other, I'd rather not give it to the consultant.
One, one results in the same thing, so to your point.
I think it's interesting, but the list over here, it's the list of organizations or municipalities that have not done the study. I mean, you think of, you know, because there's seventeen jurisdictions that make up Hampton Roads, and I think you only show nine up here, okay? That means eight, and you think about the eight, Southampton County, Franklin.
And I don't know that they didn't, Mr. Shepherd, we just didn't serve it.
Well, they're not shown up here.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, so, but what it, what it tells me is that you have to look at the character of the municipality, how different are they from the others? Okay, I mean, Southampton County's very rural.
Very rural.
And, you know, Franklin, very small, like, well, it only populated a city of way two, three thousand, maybe. So it, to, to do a study, I think fits with whatever the character of the, of the municipality, what do you need to get done, why do you, you know, if we haven't done one for so long, why haven't we done one for so long? And I dare say it's probably because that it fits with, well, it's a cost, but I don't ever remember shying away from us doing a study on compensation like that.
We did one a long time ago, we broke down according to different jobs.
I mean, normally, you're going to, if you do a compensation study, it's going to cost you not only just for the study, or you come out of the other end of it.
Yes, sir.
The results is going to cost you.
So if, if I might add to that, we did them internally, a quarter of the positions at a time, while Mr. McReynolds was still here. Until the recession. Until the recession in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, and then we stopped doing it, and we never went back to it. And then we did the compensation study in two thousand sixteen as a way to catch up, but then it wasn't funded to implement it, so it just sat in the corner, and that caused all kinds of staff morale issues, because, hey, you did the study, I think I'm underfunded, and my position's underpaid, what's the status of the study? We can't talk about it, can't talk about it, because we didn't, there was not enough money to implement it.
And to your point.
They didn't implement any of it.
Yes, and to your point, Mr. Shepherd, you are exactly right in the, in the makeup of the localities. The, the one reason that we thought this was very important for you all to see is because the people that we compete with, the localities that we compete with for positions, it's not the Southampton's and the Franklin's, it's those localities right there, and that's the, that's the place that hits us. That's correct, and so this is why it's critical that we share this information with you and just let you see, this is where we stand.
We've got some real world examples to show you.
Then I'm going to show you.
Over the two thousand sixteen study?
It was comprehensive, because we had, as, as Mr. Bellamy said, we had done it for years, we had done a quarter of the positions every year, and that rotated out. So every four years, you knew that your position.
Was going to be done.
Was reviewed, and then adjustments made. And then the recession in two thousand ten, eleven, twelve hit, steps, stops, all of that stopped. We finally got back on our feet in two thousand sixteen and did the study, but then again, like I said, it wasn't funded, so it, it didn't do any good, so.
Did it include just county staff, did it include fire, Sheriff Department?
All, all positions.
Okay, all right, so, one of, I mean, we, we have a, we have a study we're sitting on right now, that we're not going to be able to move forward on, so one thing at a time, but. One, one approach that we can consider, we're ready, we're ready to talk about it, is kind of like, quarter at a time, just pick departments, let's see, if this department is funded correctly as far as salary, and then get that one squared away, and then you move to another one.
How does that help the morale of the others in the other departments?
They've seen it happen.
Six at a time.
They've seen it happen.
It's how you act, it's just an approach, it's how you want to approach this thing.
This is not a discussion for this year, but maybe something, if we, if we're going to do it, do, do it by pieces.
We're, yeah, we're hopeful.
Because then you can fund the pieces, you may not be able to fund an entire, fund, fund the results of an entire county study, so.
I think the staff would be happy, even at that, if, if we came to the conclusion that we were not able to do it comprehensively or globally, I, I think they'd be happy to see some progress.
Some progress.
These studies give us.
A quarter of them.
Give us the supervisors.
That three quarters.
Let you know that you're being considered at least as helpful.
It gives us the supervisors, it gives us some basis for comments and thoughts about whether we have to do a, a four percent or whatever percent pay raise, you know? We can see what's going on around us, but in truth, it's still a guess, you know, because what you're doing is you're kind of, you're just looking around and trying to figure out what's, you know, the inflation's going on, and what's everybody else doing, and.
Rose is getting ready to take the gas away.
Rose, you have the first one?
She's done, you, there'll be no doubt in your mind about where we stand.
It could be really, really ugly, you're still not.
Mr. Shepherd, come on, give us a little glimpse of hope, give us a little bit.
Have another piece of candy.
I mean, just a little bit, we're giving you candy, what, what more can we give you? Okay, so, all right, well, let me, let me show you, and you know what, but before I go on, Mr. Rowan, to your point about the staffing study, you're right, because we, we even have the staffing study where they recommended that, you know, they assessed our departments, and we're short, we need this many new positions, and it didn't even include public safety in that first phase, as you know, so. You know, it, while we can't fund it, and that's not in this current budget that Mr. Bellamy recommended, it doesn't change the conditions by which our employees are working, and that's something we can't lose sight of. Okay, so, to the right, this is an actual screenshot of an ad that James City County ran for the very same position that we just called construction maintenance worker. As you can see, I've highlighted in yellow their range, now, understand, they're advertising for one slash two slash three, which we do as well too sometimes, and so that range reflects the low end of the one and the high end of the three, okay? So if you take the low end of the one, it's thirty-six, three eighty-seven, hours is thirty-one, eight ninety-three, we are fourteen percent lower, just out of the gate with starting salary. Now, one note that we put in the bottom there, Mr. Bellamy just recently in February, increased our full-time minimum salary from twenty-seven, five sixty to thirty-one, eight ninety-three. Had he not done that, we would have been thirty-two percent behind James City County. And that's a critical position, and the reason we're highlighting this position is because Public Works is struggling with these vacancies to not only recruit, but to keep people, and this is, this is a bulk of the vacancies that the county has, and we are really, really lagging when it comes to this. And so this is one example, and now I would like to show you yet another example. One of the things that Mr. Bellamy and I chat about, you know, we're trying to figure out how to make York County be considered as a top contender again, because that's something that we have lost a little bit, and we've experienced that, as we've made job offers, and now the climate is that you make job offers, and people tell you, I've got multiple job offers on the table, and then ultimately, they don't pick York County. So we've got to figure that out.
So as an example, week before last, Brian and Susan and I interviewed four candidates. We made four offers, I got one. I offered above what the previous person that held that job was making to get those people, and I could only get one out of the four.
And we gave them what they asked, we gave them within the reins they asked for.
And when two of them turned us down, they told us that they had taken other jobs for more money with other organizations.
Yeah, I mean, so this, you know, this is just the climate, and, and that's just part of the struggle, and so, you know, we talk about, even at the last work session, Doug did so good referencing, how do you all decide between what's more important, teachers or county staff, right? And then you reference how we're behind on James City County, which is again why we wanted to show you, we talk about the need to keep York County looking clean, cut our grass, you know, get our roads cleared, these are the jobs that do that, and this is why this is important for you to see where we are. And I want to show you another one. And I want to show you another one. This is engineer, this is another position that Mr. Krieger struggles to keep filled. And as you can see, this is James City County's ad. You can see in yellow, I've highlighted their ranges and I've compared it to ours. And you can see for the level one, we are thirteen percent lower, level two, ten, and level three, seven. That's just out the gate with starting salaries.
Are we not correct though that James City County, this doesn't count the funding for their?
That's correct.
They're gonna get an increase this fall because they've done that staffing study.
That's correct.
That they funded, so.
On another slide, I'll show you, they, because remember, they're on the list, if I could go back, they're on the list of having a compensation study done. In fact, they've had two in the last eight years. So that funding is also going to impact these and go even higher where we're not moving because we haven't had that and been able to do that yet. So here is Newport News. This is their actual ad for the same engineering positions, and there's their ranges. We are ten percent lower in all levels. And we show you that because that's our competitive neighbor. And so this is why we're struggling and, and it's, it's real. So we just wanted to make sure we showed you illustrations that it's not just a concept, it's not just a theory, right? This is what we're battling. And so to Brian's point, these are the actual snippets of their proposed budgets who've come out and announced their budgets already. And that little orange sign in the upper corner shows you that these, this is a locality who's also done a comp study increase, okay? So you'll see that they're proposing a three percent raise and a potential additional one percent raise in January. You'll see I've underlined they've done a comp study recently. So they've got that funding on top of a G W I that's gonna likely happen for them. And that's, again, something that we have to just factor in. Here is Gloucester County, this is a snippet from their proposed budget. And you can see they're asking for a three percent COLA. And we'll talk about benefits in the second half of this presentation. I just wanted you to see, they're doing a twelve and a half percent increase in health insurance costs. And Gloucester is one of the localities that's currently in progress of doing a comp study. Okay? Here is Newport News, this is a snippet from their proposed budget. They're proposing a three percent. They've also just recently done a comp study. Here is Norfolk. Their proposed budget, they also are phasing in the implementation of the funded comp study and they're proposing a two and a half percent general wage increase. This is Virginia Beach, same thing, market study, three percent, and they're battling rising healthcare costs as well. So we wanted to show you, yes, sir.
Yeah, before you move forward.
Which one?
Just, just right there, fine. So my question is, when you gave us comps, they all came from James City, right?
Yes, sir.
Or did I miss one?
For the positions, one from Newport News, yes, sir.
So where do the others stack up? Because at some point, James City County's gonna have all they need. Or Newport News is gonna have all they need. So how does, how does the other counties around us stack up to where we're at opposed to where you just showed us? Because personally, I think you probably just showed us the worst case scenario, I would think.
Hmm, not necessarily. I showed you key vacancies that we are battling, like Mr. Krieger, he has one-fourth of the vacancies of the entire county.
But I'm saying, you, you probably showed us if it was James City County, they'd probably pay the highest.
Not necessarily. So here, for example, this is just their range, you see? So we're just showing you where our ranges compare to their ranges. So this isn't talking about what they would hire them at.
Yeah, but I'm saying, where's Newport News and where's Hampton and where's either other counties?
She did give you that example with the engineers.
The engineers, look at the engineers.
I'm saying, that's the point, I guess I'm making, that we need to get a, a full view of all the counties around us or cities.
Yes, sir.
That we're stacked up against.
That would be the compensation study.
Correct, that's the exact comp study.
That's what we have to do, yeah.
Yes, so there's two prongs to a comp study. One would be the internal equity and how we fare with the surrounding localities, and the other piece is our pay structure. So comp studies will have two pieces typically, if, again, depending on the scope that we, we request for them to do. But those are the two typical pieces in a comp study. And that's exactly what you're talking about. Wayne is to have our positions surveyed across the market, see where we fare. We get those requests all the time from people, other localities that are doing them, and they want to see where we are with all of our positions and all of our job descriptions. And that's exactly what a comp study would do.
That we have to pay a lot for.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And then be able to fund the results.
How much do these studies cost, you think?
Mr. Shepherd, I think in today's world, it could easily cost quarter of a million, two fifty to have one done, um, and then to fund it, Ms. Goodman actually put in.
Don't go that far.
Okay, yeah, it's millions of dollars. It's millions of dollars.
A quarter of a million to get an answer.
And the longer we wait, the more out of whack we are, the more it's gonna cost us to implement.
But I would recommend that we not do one just to do it. If we're not prepared to act on it, do not do it because what it will do to the mentality of the staff is, is it will just destroy them.
Don't, don't do any more than you're able to fund.
Correct.
That's right.
I, I think what you were driving at was a thought. So look at Newport News, eventually Newport News will fill all their positions, so they won't be advertising anymore. So it doesn't really matter what their pay scale is.
None of this is gonna matter.
Because they're not advertising and then.
When they max out.
But, but I guess, I guess a couple of thoughts from that is, no one ever maxes out because somebody leaves, new actives in, so there's, there's always an ad out there. So they're, every locality is always gonna be attracting people. And, but even if you get to that scenario where every locality is fully staffed up and they're not hiring anymore, who do we get? All the people that couldn't make the cut for them.
Possibly.
And so we don't.
As a matter of.
Or maybe somebody that left a job because they see a better future at York County.
Could, could be, and, and that goes to the question, what other amenities does York County offer as an employer?
Yes, sir.
They maybe not be able to, and those, those may be some soft, um, term, you know, amenities as opposed to hard dollar match, but that, but it's all part of the equation.
Mr. Rowan, you were spot on actually, because you all know, we conduct background checks on all of our positions, and I can attest to you.
How did we get this job?
I should have run.
I used a fake number.
I can attest to you, the quality of the applicant that we get is also impacted by our competitiveness because we do not get the top candidates. And so the quality of them, I can absolutely sit before you and attest. If I could tell you the quality of the background checks that we get, they're not employed here. And they're not going to be able to be employed here, and that's.
What? I need to understand what you just said.
The results of the background checks, Mr. Shepherd, have rendered them not employable here.
Of whom?
Of the candidates that have applied for these positions in public.
Okay, so we don't hire them?
No, sir. But I'm telling you, the quality of them that we're seeing.
Right.
Is not very good.
But don't you think that's regional? That's, that's not specific to York County.
It's not specific, however, the top candidates, when, when they, right, when they go to see what job do I apply for, they might apply for all of them and see what happens, but they're gonna go with the one. They're gonna chase the dollar because of what it costs to live today. And we can't do much about that until we become a contender in the game. And so this is, again, it's not a fix-all, it's not an absolute across the board. This is just part of the challenges we just wanted to share with you that we face.
And that, and that matches some what I've heard from local business people talk about where they've had to increase their starting salaries or salaries to get a better quality of candidates because when they're, when they're not competitive, you know, they're getting the candidates that.
Yes, sir.
Won't, won't pass the test.
Yes, sir.
Run hot, all that, all that stuff. So in order to get the better quality candidates, they're, they're having to raise their starting salaries to get the people they want or they can rely on, so.
You got it.
So that kind of mirrors, so what, kind of see a mirror of what we're seeing out in the business.
Oh, so, I mean, listening to this, so Mark, my question to you is that, did you not present a budget that was adequate for us to solve these problems? I mean, you only charged, I mean, you come up with four cents, but, you know, we've been talking about, Dan, oh, I started to say Danny, but, uh, Sheriff Montgomery is asking for more deputies. That's almost a million dollars, that's worth another penny. What would, what would increasing the pay just to be competitive? What would that, what are you looking at? Another penny, two pennies, what? I mean, how far behind do we have to get before, before it becomes a crisis?
Well, what I believe you need to do is, what, what we had hoped is to lay the groundwork for a comp study during this budget. Put the seed in your idea, you know, in your head, and then when we come to FY twenty-seven, my hope is we'd be in a position to do that, and not only to do the study, but to fund it.
Okay, but, but what you just said and all that, to me, sounds like a lot of money to pay raise with, you know, six, seven, seven cents, which is a lot more than the four cents. But the point is, how far, how far do we go, okay, before it becomes a crisis? I'm sitting here, I keep thinking the chief and that twenty, twenty-two or twenty-four firefighters he had to replace. I mean, that's just, that to me is crazy. That's, that's a huge number. And then the sheriff's looking because he needs, you know, he only has three traffic cops. So he needs more traffic cops, okay? I'm not gonna debate the traffic cops, I'm, we're gonna pay what we can pay, right? I mean, that's, that's the deal.
It is what it is.
But what are, what are we doing for our citizens here? If we got these employees that are valuable, you know, I, I saw the proposal where you took, you know, a couple hundred thousand off for, for, uh, stormwater crew or something like that. That's the same crew that picks up the garbage along thirty, one thirty-four, seventeen Victory Boulevard. I'm gonna tell you what, in my district, that's a priority.
That's a priority.
It is a priority. That's why we, you know, I had to come in and fight for a whole crew one, one year because of that kind of problem, and stormwater, you know, cleaning up pipes that we can't get VDOT to take care of. So.
Are those employees more important than teachers? Is that what I'm hearing?
It's, it's sometimes. But I mean, very much, that's a whole nother, that's a whole nother group.
Right.
The point.
You've got both sides that have to take care of.
Is I, I, you know, we, we sit here, we can give a, you know, do Kentucky postage, the supervisors can sit here and can, based on our experience and knowledge and what we, and what we hear from, from our constituents. But these are the experts in, in this particular area of government. This is a particular area of government. And I'm just, uh, you know, and I hear these briefings and I wonder if we're not gonna do anything. So how far do we go? How far do we go before something really happens bad? How far does substandard performance go before it becomes a real problem?
So to go back to your question that you just asked me, we have, if you recall, the board just recently allowed me to up the certification pay for paramedics.
Yes, we did.
Okay? That put us in a great position in fire and life safety, assuming that the folks that come on board have the aspiration to be a paramedic. That'll be great for them. As Rose just told you, we raised the starting salary from the twelve forty-one to fifteen thirty-three.
Per hour.
But.
Per hour.
Right. So we, we are, we are making progress to avoid the catastrophe that you're talking about. But we're gonna need some extra help, and, and that's the purpose of this conversation tonight, is to let you know that, I know there's been some questions about the four percent and five hundred dollars, but based on what you're seeing now, I, I think we've made a good case that that's probably the minimum we ought to be considering. So that's where we are. And we, we have made progress improving our position, but we still have a ways to go.
And may I add to that? I'm sorry.
So what was the fifteen thirty-three an hour for?
Minimum, our minimum wage.
Our minimum wage.
I'll also share with you, we're still behind James City County.
Federal minimum wage is.
You're gonna be behind somebody.
Prefer to say a living wage, but we're nowhere near.
No, no. The minimum wage is not meant to be a living wage, so.
Yeah, the board has discussed living wage many times over the years.
Let me ask this question too, because you mentioned certification and training. When, when we pay to get somebody to provide, people, some people certification, like paramedic certification and so forth, is there a, an expectation of time they will commit to staying in the county after that certification?
Yes, sir, there is not.
Should, shouldn't that be?
There used to be.
No, sir.
Why not? I mean, we're, we're committing a lot of money and they could take that training and go.
Yeah, we had this conversation, you and I talked about this in my office. So, and the chief will, he, you know, if he wants to chime in, he's welcome to add to this conversation. But here's the reality. We, we have done that and we have asked for them, we, we've lived that model. And what happens is you get somebody that doesn't want to be here and they just make themselves miserable and everyone that's around them. They pollute the entire work environment, it is easier just to move on. And I'd also tell you that we're one of, we were one of three that were doing that. Is that right, chief? Yes. So we were only one of three. Everybody else basically has an open border. If they want to jump ship, they jump ship. The way we need to be retaining people is pay and culture. We need to do both of those, it's not one. If we can get pay and culture, we're not gonna have that problem. That's, that's the key to solving this.
I, I, I don't disagree with that. Or do we need to do a better job at selecting who gets those certifications? People who are looking to invest their time here in York County and not just anybody that asks for it.
How do you judge that?
Well, that's where you got supervisors that work with people day in and day out and you get a read on those people.
At this moment, we certainly could, um, set some parameters for that. We don't have that in place right now. But I, and I've shared this with the chief, and I don't know how widely known this is, but it is my desire that sometime in the future, we add paramedic to their job description. So it's required of them when they come to work.
And there is credit we get for investing in employees at that level, at that amount of money. If you have a great work culture and you invest in them with that kind of substantial increase, they'll stay. They're not jumping ship from paramedic to paramedic. You don't, you don't often see that.
I don't, I don't want to be draconian about it, but there's gotta be a certain subset of those employees who are saying, I can go here and get free education and then as soon as I get it, I'm, I'm jumping ship. They're, they're, they are purposely using that to go elsewhere. And that, and that bothers me more than people who get it and put the earnest effort in and like, and to see officers elsewhere.
And the same is true, and, and I may misname some of these, but as I said, we were only one of three out of seventeen localities that were doing that. So Virginia Beach is not doing it, Norfolk's not doing it, Portsmouth's not doing it, et cetera. I know Hampton is, we're one. Um, chief, do you recall who the others were? Newport News and Williams were.
They teach you, they teach you kind of sweeten the pot. If you have somebody that already shows up, is certified, you don't have to go back through a certification.
They, they still have a process.
In the end, in the end, I think if ever, because it sounds like that's a competitive point. It would seem to me that the, the labor market would drive everyone to try to get that certification because this is the, you get more pay in the job, okay? Now, if you come in and you get your certification and you'd prefer to work in Norfolk, well, there's nothing you're gonna do about that. You can say, well, you work two years here, but like you said, it causes another problem, but.
We do have that in place, Mr. Shepherd. We do have a new hire incentive that we pay if they come with the certification.
Right, so that means that everybody's gonna go out and try to get the certification so they can come in and work. So it should not be a, I mean, that would only be a defining moment for, for pay.
I just don't want them to come to York County just to get a certification, just saying, go to Norfolk. I want them to come to York County and get a certification, just stay in York County.
If the job is open, I would think, Norfolk, they would go over and try that job and then get certified there.
If, if they offer certification, often.
All of them are gonna do this, all the firefighters, all of them.
Well, if all, if all, yeah, but right now it's not all.
This is, this, well, my understanding, this is why, this is an issue that's come up before a long time ago. It was, the point was that all the, all the jurisdictions in one form or another were trying to get these certifications. So everybody was, that was a pool, if you will.
And I'd also share with you, chief and I were just talking about it. Chief, I might ask if you would, talk about it a little bit, but not for paramedic, but for people that we bring on board to become firefighters that go through the academy. They do have an obligation to stay with us for a short period of time. Otherwise, they have a financial obligation to us. Chief would talk about it. Chief will talk about it.
So, a new firefighter has a firefighter contract. If we spend money on their physical, their uniforms, their protective clothing, uh, and they don't stay here three years, then they have an obligation to repay, and it's prorated based on how long they stay here. We, we do offer hiring bonuses for pre-qualified folks and there are, there is a repayment obligation there. If you have paramedic, for example, and we hire you, once you get through recruit school, if you have not completed recruit school, you will get a four thousand dollar bonus for the fact that you've got paramedic. Because it costs us ten thousand dollars, eight to ten thousand dollars to put you through the paramedic program. So that's a bonus. If you come to us with having already completed the recruit school and paramedic, it's a substantially higher bonus. And they have an obligation to remain here for two years. The, the one thing about the paramedic, it, you know, it, it really costs, while there's a cost involved in providing the paramedic tuition that we, we pay for. It, we view it as a cost of doing business because it shows the employee that we are trying to help them be successful. At the same time, they're helping us make sure we provide the very best services to the community. And I, I'll tell you, you know, the majority of our calls are emergency medical services. And we have one of the best EMS systems in the, in the, I believe, in the country, certainly in the Commonwealth. Twice we've been the EMS agency of the year for the Commonwealth of Virginia. And it's because of our people. And as long as we keep focusing on the quality of paramedic programs and we have people that want to become paramedics, okay? Then we're going to be successful. But the only way we're going to be successful is by being competitive with salaries and things like stipends and that sort of thing. And, and we are seeing situations where it may not be the starting salary. It may be where people are at year two, three, and four down the road, career steps, that we could start seeing ourselves falling behind. And we, we are very, uh, we are in the job market with Virginia Beach, Richmond, Henrico, Chesterfield, James City, Newport News, Hampton. I mean, our firefighters work a twenty-four hour shift. So it's not like they're traveling across the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel every single day during the week. They're doing it during the weekday, two or three days a week, okay? So our job market is much, even much wider than the normal job market for a forty-hour week employee. It's, it's nothing to have firefighters that live in Franklin or firefighters that live in, in Richmond or Hanover or Henrico, uh, to come to work for us. So we want to do everything we can to remain competitive, okay? No different than the sheriff. He, he deals with the same thing and nine-one-one from a public safety perspective. And we're hoping that this will be able to allow us to remain competitive.
Chief, I hear, I hear, I've heard this a lot, that people come to like, they come to work in York County because it's kind of a safer, nicer place to work, okay? I mean, I mean, and I've, especially I hear this in the education side. How do you, how do you, what's your thoughts about that in terms of firefighters? Why do they come here if they're going to get less pay?
Well, I think, you know, we have, part of it is just the work environment that they're in, okay?
Well, I mean, that's what I'm talking about, the work environment, so.
But.
You mean, how do they mark, market that?
Well, no, if, if, I know we have problems keeping people.
Well, chief, answer that question, please. You're searching for twenty-four right now. How many of those are retirees versus people who?
Well, I don't, well, we aren't searching for twenty-four right now.
Okay.
We, we filled, we had twenty-four vacancies that included retirees. Predominantly a mix of retirees and, and folks that have resigned. I don't recall the numbers specifically because that would have, we wouldn't have done that back in.
How many are leaving to jump ship to go to somewhere else because of pay? That's the question being asked.
I don't have that number with me tonight, okay? But it is, I mean, we, we have had a number of folks leave because of, of pay.
Okay.
And what's the number? You got any general idea how many?
James City County, I don't.
Fifty percent, what?
I honestly, I would hesitate to give you a number tonight on where we were. I mean, I can, I can certainly tell you how many that was, but, uh, I mean, I, just in the last three months, I've had four people retire. So that's one thing. And, and, and.
But then you got to fill a position.
It's, it's, it's still the same equation. You still need to attract somebody in that position and salary is part of that attraction.
Yeah, it's slightly different because you're not losing them due to salary, you're losing them due to.
But we, but we still have a vacancy that we got to.
I understand the vacancy part, but.
I would say.
Concerned if we're losing them because we're.
Majority of our losses have been because they have resigned and not retired.
Okay. You answered the question.
The one thing I want to be very careful about here, and I think this board needs to be very careful about it. And I look around the room and I see all these employees in here. And I want to tell you what, I, I am extremely proud of all of you guys. I mean, everybody that's worked in this county has done a just a tremendous job of, of doing the business that they've got to do. Pay, I think, is a reflection of respect. Um, it's something we need to address, but I, I just, you've heard us, then Rose, the way you were saying about people wouldn't, wouldn't be employed here and stuff like, that's because we do set a standard. You have to, that, that, a certain level of expertise, performance, attitude, things like that, that we're just not hiring people off the street. So I don't want to, I don't want to, I do not want the employees, the staff to feel like, well, they're working for York County, therefore they're slugs, they can't get a job.
Oh, no way. And you know, Mr. Shepherd, to that point, back in the day, there was a time, had these inflation challenges and this cost of living not been an issue, we wouldn't have people chasing the dollar. There are a lot of people that have given us feedback that they leave, but they don't want to, but they have to because of the finances. And so that's exacerbating.
You used to have a lot of employees here who were forty, fifty, thirty, forty, fifty years here.
We still do, sir.
And they just wanted to be, because they liked being in York County, but we still got to address the pay.
Yes, sir.
And this, and the certification issue isn't just the fire and life safety issue. There are certifications, you know, I, I chief department have all, all kinds of certification that makes their job attractive. I think Rob's going to start seeing specialized training and certification. In fact, we're going to talk about one, one tonight as technology drives things forward. People need to get trained on new technology and then suddenly when that person gets trained and is proficient, that person gets very attractive to all the, all the localities that need that talent. They can just hire them and pluck them in, so it's.
That's why salary is important.
I, I still think we look for Mr. Bellamy to come back to us with what he feels he needs in terms of a balanced budget to meet these pay issue, compensation issue challenges. I'm, I'm still concerned, why are we spending money on a consultant when the answer is obvious?
Good point. I mean, and the other piece that I want to make sure you guys understand, as I talk about pay structure and current employees and their pay. So pay structure is about the recruitment side of it, right? So we have, every year we possibly can, we do increase our pay ranges because you have to do that to just kind of maintain some closeness to the competitiveness going on in the market. But you have to also be very conscious that you don't increase your pay ranges more than your general wage increase. Because then you shrink the gap between new employees and existing and it creates compression.
You don't need that.
So you, but both sides of the coin have to happen, right? Because one impacts the other. So as we try to recruit people and, and it costs us so much more, and then sometimes we don't even get them, but it costs us so much more. And then you have the existing employees and we have to figure out how to message them. And so it costs an enormous amount of money to do those things, which is why we just need, you know, we need you guys to kind of keep that as one of your priorities at least and all the things you've got to consider.
We need you guys to give us the foundation by which we can able make a decision.
Understood.
I mean, I.
Yeah, it's, it's obvious that you have the numbers.
Right.
We, we have that. We don't need a compensation study to tell us that we're X amount behind Newport News. You already have the numbers for JCC.
Understood.
Why would we spend a quarter of a million dollars to give us something we already have our hands on or can get our hands on? Right?
Right, to that, to that point, we know what the salary are. We, we, we don't need any study for that. If we ever do a study, it should be on broader compensation attributes like healthcare contributions. What, what do they like, working here elsewhere, but that's down the road. We don't need to spend that money anytime soon. Like you said, the numbers are right here. We can look at the ads, we can go to any, any of the county's, uh, city's websites to go, well, what does each department pay? And that tells us what the market value is for any given thing. We, to your point, we got it.
We've got the numbers.
So let me ask you a question. How many, how many of these jobs are we having a hard time filling?
Public works. We gave you probably the top three.
Maybe one too.
Fair?
Yes, that's fair. We are struggling with firefighters. We are somewhat struggling with deputy sheriffs, but even though you don't see it in their vacancies, we do have a lot of deputy sheriffs that come to us from other localities, taking lower pay to just come work here. That speaks to the culture that Mr. Bellamy was talking about.
We're doing a lot of, we're doing a lot of overtime, aren't we?
Well, for that, but.
Which is more expensive.
We're trying to work through that now.
It's more expensive than the employee itself.
Some of our specialized positions we struggle with. When I say specialized, like whether it's a planner, whether it's a class and comp person, HR, whether it's a finance person, those very special technical jobs. IT has some challenges as well. Um, and the, the rate that we are creating vacancies, it's trying to keep up and it's, it's just a vicious cycle. I mean, so it is all of those key positions, Mr. Drury, that, you know, anytime you see jobs that are on our website for a long period of time or that have constant turnover, as Mr. Roan spoke to. You know, sooner you fill one, you got another one gone. And so between retirements and between, you know, people leaving for whatever reasons they are, it is just, it is just a vicious cycle.
So you guys like to do, uh, you know, you don't have to eat the whole pig at once, right? Of the elephant. So why don't we just, you know, pick a few jobs and give pay raises?
That's my point, is if we have certain areas that we're having a hard time, why are, why are we talking about the whole county? Why aren't we focusing, instead of spending a quarter of a million dollars?
We're just, we're just giving you the ones that we can tell you that we are struggling with the most and the most, uh, have the most recurrence of having a problem. I could, I could come up with ten more if it, if it makes a difference to you. Because, well, there are more, but these are the ones that we decided to highlight tonight.
Well, you highlighted in four reasons. So if you highlighted four reasons, then why, as, as Tom was just saying, why aren't we taking the top three and starting there? And then we'll move to the next three and go there instead of paying two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do a study that we don't need to do. Let's take that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and put towards where we're having a hard time getting people.
Mr. Drury, I got the message.
Okay.
Thank you.
But did you get the message? You got to come back and tell us what you really need.
Do you really want me to come back and tell you?
I do, I mean, I'm telling.
A million dollars, two million dollars?
Yes, I want to know what you need.
Today?
I, yes, I want to know what you need, okay? We'll decide whether, how, you know, we may argue over, you know, we need to put the money over there, put it on employees. But come back, give us the information, we need to make a decision.
I'd make a proposal that we take the next six months and pull that together and present a mid-year.
Correction.
Correction discussion.
I'd like that.
I think I like that better.
I'm all in on that.
Talk about it.
Because I would, I would like to see a, a, a medium for each of these, each of these positions.
Across the board.
Across our, our competitive localities. Say here, here's the market medium, here's the market low, here's the market high, and then we can see where our people fit.
We can solve all the problems today. Uh, this I should put, at least we're, we recognize what they are. And I like the idea of a mid-course correction, six months out. We'll see, you know, how the, how the funding comes in, uh, what the economy is like and what we can afford to do. We can't raise, we cannot raise taxes midterm, but we can plan to raise taxes again if necessary, after we know we have some solid information.
We'll make adjustments to the.
Adjustment.
We can always make budget adjustments, right?
So.
Make budgets adjustments, where are you going to get the money?
We'll have to see, six months down the road, it's someplace else. If we're over budget, under budget, we'll figure it out.
I mean, I'll bring it.
I just don't want it to come out of the CIP or the reserves because that's a problem.
We'll talk about that in six months. We don't need to cross that bridge yet.
So this conversation has been about straight salary, okay? No, nothing extra. So we have been asked by the firefighters' union, one of the things, they come to me or whoever is the administrator every year, and they say, these are things we'd like to have, firefighters' union. So the thing they asked me for this year was a step raise. So they want to put steps back in place. So, you know, we used to have steps a little more than ten years ago and we went away from it because we couldn't afford it. We couldn't, couldn't continue it under the financial constraints we had. So that, that's been asked. So what they're saying is that steps are part of the competitive process and they're seeing the other fire departments. And I know that the sheriff has mentioned this to me as well. They're seeing the other organizations add step raises to theirs. So they get the general wage increase and then they get a step increase. And steps are often about a percent, a percent and a half per step. And the step recognizes their tenure in the organization. So.
Right.
So that's that. And then the next thing I wanted to bring to you, so think about the, just a standard general wage increase, throw steps on top of it, and then you want to have the merit conversation. So.
Can you have a merit conversation and a step conversation? Don't they, aren't they mutually exclusive?
You have to be real careful with the merit comp, merit, I mean, business.
This is why I'm bringing this to your attention. I've been asked for this.
They don't.
And being asked for other things, so this is something.
Government, I don't know if they work in government.
I have to say, I think that's very subjective. It's my only issue.
Mrs. Noel, right, right now, I would agree with you. As you know, we, in fact, today's April Fool's Day. Today we launched the new performance management system. Right now, the reason that you saw in the staffing study report and Mr. Bellamy's recommendation is for us to wait three years out. Because we just launched a new system countywide, which is an undertaking for this county.
Yes.
And you have to train people on how to do them correctly.
Yes.
On time and consistently.
There's steps.
And until you do that, it opens too much subjectivity to tie people's pay.
One conversation, please. I can't focus on both.
So because it's not saying never, it's just saying not right now. Because launching a new system, this, of this magnitude, you have to train everybody on how to do them correctly before you tie people's pay to it. And so that's why we're saying, and, and the Berkeley group even agreed, it's something they recommend that we do, but understand that it's going to take us a few years to get there. And so if you get there, there are some localities that merge merits with step increases. There are some that have steps and merit. And so it depends on what you can fund, but as a locality, just keep in mind, you would have to be able to fund a general wage increase, a step increase, a merit increase, and anything else that you want to throw in there. And so again, it just adds to the funding responsibility and whatever we decide that that looks like for us, we just have to be able to fund them.
You know, the step increase, then we were just, that's what we were talking about. In, in business, um, it was, it was your performance and you ended up with a bonus, okay? Generally a bonus, then you got a pay raise. And, and, and if, and if, if company made a lot of money or making money, you made money, okay? If the company wasn't making money, then, you know, the results. In, in the government, I, I, I had never seen a, uh, I don't know, what do you, what do you even call it? Not the, I mean, I've seen the steps because, you know, you get a GS, say you're a GS twelve, step two, step three. And, and the, the whole pace thing is laid out. I guess they could hold you back on a step if you didn't get the recommendation, but that was, that was, that was almost like a performance.
And, and localities freeze steps.
But then you would grade out in the job. That was if the job was a GS twelve or fourteen, that's as high as you go. I mean, you could not ever get any higher. You would then get a, a annual, uh, inflation, cost of living, all that kind of stuff would be thrown in there, but that would have been it. Once you max out your job, you max it out. But in business, you would, you could, I mean, as long as I was in business, man, I tell you what, the money flowed. You were making, you were making, you were getting the bonus. You were getting the bonuses, you could get, I mean, if you were, if you were in business development, you were business development. That was your job. If you were a manager of business development, a vice president, president, that's, that was your job. But the money was always could come in because it was the bonus of how the company was working. The county is not a business, okay? And we make, our money comes from one place, essentially. It comes from taxes or some, it comes out of the pockets of somebody, okay? It's our constituents. And so keeping our employees, I would say, is that the steps are important. If you're in an engineering job, I don't know, the grade, engineering step one or, you know, you, and however many steps you would have, that would be, that would be it. And, and your performance evaluation could determine whether you were going up a step. But that's, that's sort of what we would call an incentive or some, we were calling it a, what, what did?
So we do career ladders.
Career ladder.
Career ladders internally that accomplish the same thing. The attractive piece about steps usually is that employees like to be able to see.
And they know where to go on.
Okay? But the piece that people often forget is you can see it all day, you got to be able to fund it. And, and you have a, right now, we're struggling with four percent. You can only split that four percent so many ways. So we were facing a four percent, we're challenged with it. How are you going to split four percent between a general wage and a step increase and a merit? It can only go with so many ways. And so that's, that's the piece that I understand the attractiveness from an employee perspective of seeing steps, but they don't understand locality has to fund it. And I've been in a locality where it's frozen and they freeze them because, or they skip a step because you can't afford it. And so that's why, you know, as we share with you, the average step increase for the average market that we've seen is two and a half percent. But it is mostly for sworn public safety, that's typically what you see. Um, and, you know, Newport News, Virginia Beach, Procoaston, Hampton, Chesapeake, they all are doing steps for public safety, but not for the general employee, the non-public safety. So again, it's just a, it's another component that we can think about, but I think we got to bite the elephant for what we got first before we add on those other pieces and figure out how we can get to where we need to get, I think, first. That would be a recommendation I'd make to Mr. Bellamy is, you know, we got to look at trying to get us in the right place first and then add on to those things. I don't think those are the solutions to where we are right now. I think it's getting us to the right place first and then maybe adding on those things.
But back, but back to your, your point, I, I believe that performance-based bonuses and, and merit increases will absolutely work in government as it does business. Revenue source is the revenue source, whether it be taxes or the products you, that you make and sell. But you gotta, you gotta recognize and award people who go above and beyond and send a message to the folks who are dialing, dialing in or not getting it done. You can't, you can't pay everybody the, the same thing when you got this person here who's going above and beyond, and he gets, and he gets the same bonus and merit increase as a guy here who, you, you got trouble even showing up to the office.
Could you, could you not skip a, a step?
No, 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 that, that, that doesn't address performance. That doesn't address the above and beyond. That, that may, that may address the low performer, but it doesn't address the high performer. There is no incentive for that high performer to work any harder than average, if all he will ever get is an average increase in a step.
Correct.
Because he's been here five years or ten years.
Right. For the people for the work they do, not for the time they spend on the job.
Has to be merit-based.
And that's what the system.
Now, your career ladders address time, cause as you, as you bump into a promotion for it, but steps, all steps reward is just you breathing in that spot for a year.
I disagree. Steps are, steps can be used as performance awards.
It'd be tied to it.
Yes, very easily, because it's a pay increase, because your performance is such, then you could step up. Now, we've had, we've had times where, like the school systems, they had no steps. After got a point, they used to have like, I don't know, a bunch of them.
They did.
Then I think it got them back, but they were no steps. And because they were, got compressed, and that's when, that caused a real problem. So the bonus, the, actually incentive thing, I don't know, we, we just have to take a look at it, but I've never seen any government, so I don't know. You have to, um, I just have to see it, how it'd work out. But I know steps can be used. You could step, you could skip steps. You can do whatever you want in management for steps. You write the rules for it to get the evaluations done by, by the, by the people that are running, their, their managers, and however you wanna, how you build it, however you want it, that's the thing.
I'll give you one more perspective.
Let's be clear, it's not Berkeley's decision whether or not to put in a performance system.
Of course.
And so their recommendation that it be held out for three years, that was completely out of line. That was not their job to come in and do that.
Right.
And I'm, I'm very upset with that. I'm very upset with that.
I, I think their scope was to make recommendations on efficiency and operations.
But not on whether or not you put a performance system in. The board asked for it, it's the board's decision, which shouldn't be overrun or overruled by Berkeley.
I don't think any of theirs is gonna be overrun. I'm not running off implementing Berkeley stuff without talking to you guys.
Yeah, I know that, but I, I, I've heard it, I've heard it enough times now that Berkeley said, and I'm, and I'm a little bit frustrated with that point.
Well, sir, you did ask for the study.
Yeah, and, and, and we had debate at the end, and I, I continue to feel that there were several questions left unanswered in that study, but we'll get to that later.
This study is not a blame, you're not blaming you for the study. The study is what it is. They gave us, what they gave us, what they gave us. Whether we, whether it gets implemented eventually will be on a recommendation, but whether we raised the money to make it work.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's how it just has its whole system.
And we've always recognized that.
But I do wanna go back to something you said a minute ago, something about it may take three years to get to the, implement, no, that, it, it gets implemented next year. We, we put it in place this year. You've trained people this year on how to write reviews and, and assign goals and objectives and so forth. So next year, people should be evaluated against those goals and objectives that they were assigned, not three years from now.
I'd, I'd like some time to discuss that with you one-on-one.
Okay, we can do it, bud.
Well, I like to hear it too, because I, getting, taking three years to get this done, I, I think that's unacceptable. Businesses do it all the time.
You gotta, you gotta know what you, you gotta know what you're gonna do, plan to do.
We are business, sorry.
You and I are gonna disagree on that, because business is profit-oriented.
We are business, we have a captive audience.
At any rate, I think we've really exhausted this topic right now, Rose. I thank you so much for the time, but we still have some other things to cover.
I still have to do the benefits half.
Do you have any more slides?
We haven't gone to the benefits half yet.
Well, maybe, maybe if the board would let you get to that point, it would be very nice. So would you please continue then?
We certainly can.
Well, don't ask for questions if you don't want answers.
Listen.
All right.
Brilliant.
We, we shall move on. Let me go back to the slide that I ended on, which is to show you this. This was, of course, Mr. Bellamy's recommended GWY. And as you might remember, last year, we showed you how the percentage really benefit, that, that flat dollar amount, it benefits the lower paid employee. And so this is just evidence to show you how the percentage is higher for the lower end of the salary versus the high.
Does, does that resonate well with the people able to wrap their head around that?
Yes.
Yes, it does, it does. It's worth more to a lower salary, that flat dollar amount. Yes, so it does. And so, again, we just wanted to.
And we're not supposed to ask questions.
Make sure. Madam Chair has spoken. Okay, so let's dive into the benefits overview. Um, as you dive into here, this is just to tell you, we are self-insured, to remind you for medical and dental. Uh, the beauty of being self-insured is it typically does lower our costs. We do have stop-loss insurance, but it allows us to customize our plans to the needs of the county. Um, the risk of that is that we pay claims. Um, so you have stop-loss to help buffer those, but we do pay claims, and so we are totally the ones who absorb the risk. Um, but it does overall save money, which the finance director, I'm sure, would agree with. So, as we talk about where we currently are in this calendar year, these are the plans that we currently offer. You all know them, I'm sure, very well. So we have an HSA, a high deductible plan. We have an OAP, which is just like a POS plan, which is a point-of-service plan. And we have our post-sixty-five plan through Human and Medicare. As you look at our participation, this just shows you our current enrollment. It is slightly up about fifty-so enrollments from last year. And you can see the bulk of our employees are in this OAP plan, this is the point-of-service plan, versus a high deductible plan. A high deductible plan is not for everyone, but it is suitable for some people. And so we have the power of choice offering both options. You can see, because we are family-friendly, you do see the impact, as you see in these gray and orange pieces of pie, where the spouses and children make up a good portion of our enrollment, in addition to the employees. This is our post-sixty-five retiree slide, which is, again, showing you a slight uptick in the enrollment. And so as people retire, this is a plan that they choose to continue with, especially because if they've got twenty consecutive years or more with the county, they get half of it paid by the county, and so it's a nice benefit for them and their spouses. This is just to show you what we did this calendar year for the benefits. And so you might recall, at the beginning of this, uh, when we were in the last budget process, actually, we did do the two percent for employees, and the county absorbed the twelve percent of the rate increase for health insurance at that time. And we did implement a new standalone vision plan for active employees and their dependents. It was a very well-received plan, lots of positive feedback, and it's a very simple plan, no cost for the county, one hundred percent employee paid. And so this is something we did implement. As we talk about the rate increase that we proposed, you might remember in Mr. Bellamy's presentation for his recommended budget, we did propose an eight percent increase, and that's for employee and for employer. As we talk about the eight percent increase, I'll give you a little bit more information about that as I share with you. The medical trend, which is one of the things that brokers often help employers understand when you look at what health insurance cost looks like. Medical trend right now for public sector is ranging from ten to fifteen percent. So our eight percent is under medical trend, and it's less than it was last year. And I'm gonna show you in the rates what that looks like as it impacts employees. Um, and that's a proposed rate increase that would be one-one-twenty-six. So we'll talk about that, so I can kinda get you to see that. Now, one of the things I also wanna point out, you know, historically, health insurance is a value proposition for employees in public sector. It's one of the reasons they seek public sector, it's for the health insurance and the retirement, in addition to the pay. And so with our current status and condition of compensation, one of the things we would not recommend is that you decrease the plan coverage that we currently have in order to try to reduce this eight percent, because that, again, is taking away yet something else from our employees that I would tell you is very valued in public sector. So as we look at the eight percent, this is effective, genuine, and please keep in mind, these rates that you see are monthly, okay? So as you take a, an active employee, you gotta divide these in half to be per pay period. So the tan columns are the proposed increase of the eight percent, letting you see what the rate increase would look like. And, and red is the delta increase, so you can see it. So if you take our most expensive plan, which is family POS plan, and you divide that in half, twenty-three dollars and fifty cents would be the monthly increase for that level of coverage with this eight percent proposed increase. Okay? And as you can see, employee only, would be two dollars. Now, if you look at our dental plan, we do have two dental plans, one's a PPO plus Premier, one's an EPO. They're very different in dynamics. So our PPO plus Premier plan, this is a plan that's gonna have a larger network. This is a plan that's gonna have an annual deductible and an annual maximum. It's going to have hundred percent coverage for basic services, eighty percent for major, fifty percent for, um, higher-level services. It, it's just with us, the way we have our rate set, you're only talking a two to three dollar difference per month in the two plans. So that's why most people are in this PPO plus Premier, as you will see. We have almost twenty-three hundred people in that plan with only fifty-two in the EPO plan.
So you know my question, Rose, how many clinics offer this plan, uh, in the Yorktown area? We've, we've certainly had problems in Williamsburg where, where people, where the clinics have opted out of dental, Delta Dental insurance.
Yes, sir. So what we are.
And, and if you go down their list of other subscribers who offer Delta Dental in Williamsburg, they're all completely full. So are you running into that problem here in Yorktown?
So we are. What we are finding, and, and it's sort of an interesting dynamic when you look at this. We, when we ask and research why providers drop out of the Delta Dental network, what we find is that they're dropping out because Delta Dental won't allow the rates to go up.
Dropping the rates year over year.
They're dropping the rates. So they, so understand this dynamic. The providers, the doctors, the dentists, they want to raise the rates, which would impact the clients like us, because then it would cost our employees more to have that coverage. Delta Dental tries to maintain those rates and not allow them to increase to allow our costs to stay reasonable, and so they drop because they're seeking higher rates. It is what we find, and it is impacting York County. It's one of the things that we see. We see it in medical as well, when there are providers that negotiate and they don't automatically renew, they're looking for the dollar, they're trying to find how to get more money. And you have the vendors who are trying to keep it reasonable for the clients to stay in business with them. And so we find it the same in medical. It, it is just the dynamic, it's no different than the high cost that employers are facing, the providers are facing the same thing. And so, again, we see that as well.
I think, I think where the employee is concerned, though, I'll, I'll speak as an example.
Yes, sir.
Uh, when I see my cost triple, because the clinic will no longer provide my cost of coverage, I, I get worried. I get worried that I, that I'm paying for a dental plan that I'm not able to utilize. And it happens to be a dental example, but I think the same is true in medical. Um, if the insurer is, is being so penny, penny-pinching that, uh, that the clinics all drop them as insurers, it leaves, it leaves patients, employees, left holding the bag.
Yes, sir.
And that's what I'm worried about.
Yes, sir. And the two options that we would have is, one, um, we have employees who would, if their provider is dropping, they'll seek who that provider would refer them to, because they trust them, you know, in most cases, right? So they'll find somebody who's in-network, so that they can reap the benefits of our plan. The other option is if we do go out to bid for it, we might face the same thing, but we could go out to bid, go through the process, get a new vendor, and still face the same thing. And so it's one of those things that, it's, again, the same with medical, you know, you typically have some people who aren't happy, because you're never gonna get a hundred percent people happy with the plan. We can go get a different vendor and still have the same issue, just a different percentage of people. And so we have some options to consider that we certainly can explore, um, as a county, and, and see what it does, okay? So, uh, as we keep going and get you out of here, the dental rates, this is, again, monthly, to show you the impact of the eight percent on dental. The tan column, again, shows you the rate increase of the eight percent. As you can see, it's a dollar per pay period or fifty cents per pay period. And so this is very negligible. Um, so, to wrap up, this is about wellness initiatives. As you know, we are self-insured, so wellness initiative is a key piece to what we do, because we try to help keep our employees healthy and well. Um, and this isn't just physically, this is also mentally. And so, in case you don't know, we did add as enhancement an onsite EAP counselor to the county. We actually have a counselor that comes to York County, and they go to four different locations once a week, I'm sorry. Yes, once a week, every week for the month, they go to a different location, and we rotate them. And so they go to the highly utilized places where they could need them, and that's Sheriff, nine-one-one, Public Works, and they come to HR for anybody who wants to just come in and have a confidential place to come. And I will tell you, out of the gate, the feedback has been amazing, and the counselor has even said she's not seen how quick this program takes on, and she's booked in the four hours that she comes to these locale, to these locations. Um, and so it's very widely utilized, it's very helpful to our employees. It's something that, as you know, we battled the wellness, we battled the mental health side of it. Um, it's, in fact, one of the things that we, Mark and I were just recently talking about, as you talk about health insurance and the utilization, the treatments, the procedures, not only is it cancer and the chronic conditions, it's also the mental health side of it that we pay for and the specialty drugs. And so you see all the commercials on TV, I mean, those things are expensive. So everybody's battling that. So these wellness things are really key to us. Um, so we wanted to show you that we are, we are putting in place lots of initiatives throughout the year to help drive these things that keep our folks well and healthy as best we can. And so I wanted you to know that that's one piece that's really nice. And, and out of all the localities, outside of one who brings them only on a as-needed basis, York County is the only locality that provides an EAP onsite counselor like that to our folks.
I didn't see the annual chili cook-off on there, I mean, that's.
That's a united way of that.
That's emotional.
Look, look at him over there, fist bumping, uh-huh. Yes.
It's, it's okay, no one told me about it last time, and I don't, I don't mind you anymore.
Get it? Ooh, ooh, spanking, okay. Well, he'll do better, Mr. Row, next time. Some future considerations, um, I think we heard, mentioned in a few board meetings um, that maybe we consider adding some legal services or pet insurance. These options would not require any contributions from the county if we were to add those to our portfolio. We can certainly consider that to expand options of choice. We can.
It's a popular trend.
It is. We are looking at ways to expand our wellness. I know, right? Yeah, that, that cost has gone up too, yes. Um, and again, we owe you a proposed plan for wellness days. But this is our presentation, and so if there are any additional questions before I get out of your way, um, we will certainly entertain them.
Sounds like you're running away.
No, I am, I am not, if it wasn't for, no, I'm sorry, Mrs. Noel, I wasn't supposed, I wasn't supposed to ask her any more questions.
You are fine, you've done a terrific job.
You're not allowed to ask any more questions, sorry.
Thank you very, very much.
All right, thank you so much.
Any questions before Rose departs? No. Best, best move before you can.
Get out, all right, hot seat. Somebody else can have it.
So the next one we've got is TAB High School Crosswalk. Can we turn the heat on?
Yes, can you? Holy moly.
Where is it?
Uh-oh.
Even more heavy sweater.
I was freezing in the hot seat.
Yep, right, next one, ever.
This one?
Yep. There you go.
It's passable, passy-candy.
There, right, there you go.
Yeah, and let me kinda give you an introduction for this. So, uh, several meetings ago, uh, during, during board members' comments, uh, this was brought up by Mr. Shepherd. We were asked to look at it. So tonight is the evolution of what we've discovered, working with Public Works and VDOT on this particular task. So Beth's gonna present where we're at right now.
So I'm here to discuss the TAB High School, um, Crosswalk and planning steps that we've taken to improve pedestrian safety for the walkers to TAB High School. So, um, staff began to look into this crosswalk situation after a series of discussions with Casey Rivera, who resides at fourteen oh five, which is this lot right here, Yorktown Road. The Riveras are two hundred feet from the intersection of Yorktown Road and Big Bethel, which is directly across the street from the high school. Mrs. Rivera shared with us how her son, who is attending there, was told that TAB was a non-walking school and that her son would be breaking school policy if he continued to walk to school. After discussions with Mr. Shepherd and Greg Dolak at the school system, we, um, worked up a plan to create a safe path to schools for students who live across the street. So we came up with, um, we looked at various options, planning options, to ensure safest, most effective solutions. So this is option one that we looked at, which was the closest to the Rivera household. Then we went and, um, examined option two, which is the intersection tied mill. And we did look at a third option, which was up the road, where the road was narrower, just in case that was a safer place to cross. Options two and three both connect to, um, the Yorktown Road sidewalk project, which will go to construction this summer, which is this black line through here, continues off the page. After evaluation, option two was chosen. So, um, we, the, the option was approved by the school board staff. We sketched up this to show the location of the crosswalk and the warning signage that would be needed, and we submitted. And we submitted this um option to VDOT for evaluation. Uh Rossi Carroll agreed to do the safety evaluation for us himself. So this was the plan that came back. He he'd also concurred that he liked option two. These were some of the findings that he found. We, the crosswalk met the necessary safety screening criteria and the crosswalk installation criteria. Um additional safety enhancements um that he off up asked that we in um consider would be the improved visibility, the rec tech, I'm sorry, rapid flashing beacon to improve visibility and driver awareness and high visibility pavement markings to clearly define the crosswalk. So our next steps are that we are going to look into the VDOT TA application process, which takes place in, starts in June and goes through to October, with funding decisions being in June of twenty twenty-six and the actual funding becoming available in the spring of twenty-two seven. Um we're also added it to our CIP um to for structured planning and budgeting. And once that is complete, we will uh proceed with finalizing the design and moving towards construction. I do have some additional pictures in case you have questions. This is what a high visibility crossings, crosswalk looks like instead of one solid, big fat line. It's um something different to grab your attention. We did en- employ the help of RDA, one of our on-call design consultants to help us with this application that we'll be putting in in June. They came up with this dollar figure of six hundred and sixty thousand. The TA application that we're going for is an eighty-twenty split. Um this was their design. Again, this black, where's my mouse? There it is. This black line is the sidewalk that will be constructed this summer. This would be an additional sidewalk to pick up people from Yorktown Road with the crosswalk going right into the sidewalk that uh will already be constructed. I also have for you, um this is the um Yorktown Road sidewalk. These are the different segments across Bethel Baptist frontage, across the field, and then the final piece taking us into the location where we'll cross, the crosswalk will be. This is just a a map showing a lot of the things that we have are working on or have been making applications for. Um even if we have been turned down for the applications, we have, we have in our plan to continue to attempt to um secure funding for those other options. I also put on here the HRSD trail to show you where that goes through. So um do you have any questions?
Yeah, can you go back to that slide, please?
Yes.
Okay, from left to right, that future Yorktown Road sidewalk and crosswalk. I I know that's is this just on the books or is it engineered or?
We applied for funding and we were rejected, so we're gonna revise our application and try again.
Okay, so that's, okay, that's, all right. The purple, the Smith Farms sidewalk and crosswalk.
Yes.
Is, are we looking for the developers of Smith Farms Estates to build that?
That is a proffered, correct, proffered.
However, I believe it's our obligation to obtain the easements.
It is.
So if we do not obtain the easements, the developer will not have to build it.
Okay, but but if we get the easements, he will have to build it.
Yes.
And who are we getting easements from?
The homeowners.
The homeowners association.
No, there's no association. Those would be the ones down Yorktown Road.
Existing houses.
And and the plan.
Do we have to pay for that or are they, that's what I think. I'm just asking. I knew what it was.
Plan for that to cross over Yorktown Road and pick up the sidewalk that'll go in front of uh Bethel Baptist Church into the high school.
Correct.
That's the plan.
Correct. I added the little bit of the sidewalk to Yorktown Road to pick up the children. You can see it right here. I, that's the one we're talking about.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, we're we're gonna make it part of that project. I I like, I like your design choice. It makes a lot of sense to put that cross in there and tie it to the new uh into the new sidewalk. It makes a lot of sense.
And the school's happy with it.
The school's okay with what you said, right?
Yeah, they've they've approved it, right.
For the other supervisors, one of the things to realize in all this structure here, if I'm not mistaken, the only bit of sidewalk is up here, the orange, is that little orange section. And there's no sidewalks here, okay? And so when the kids, uh that's why this, why this school is a no-walk school. I don't know how that's gonna last because behind it, you see all those trails. That's being built now in that uh HRSD project. For me, that little part there, that little, would they allows the kids to come out of, at least come out of their home and walk down the road. They're not walking in a ditch, okay? This is gonna get them down to that path. But right now, as it stands, the only way the kid can get to school without getting harassed by the the this administration, which he has already, is his mom has to drive him across the street to get over there. And we, and he cannot walk back across. Uh he has to then catch a bus, thirty-minute drive to get just across the street, and it's ridiculous. Now, the other thing, part of this, the benefit, is that uh that orange piece down here by the school, that one road there is Yorktown Road. That road is um about maybe as wide as two of these tables this way, okay? And then there's a ditch. There's no sidewalk at all. But the kids now come out of high school, do their long-distance running, they run down that road. And the only way, basically, I just stop my car, let them get around because I'm afraid that what's gonna happen. And uh uh that's a forty mile an hour road. Forty miles, no, I just can't get over that. And so then they come out and they go down Calthrop Neck, which has no sidewalks. Or they turn right and go across uh Victory Boulevard, which is a pretty big road and very fast traffic, major road. And then they have to get into Running Man before they can find a sidewalk. So these improvements are, I think, significant for uh for the school and for the kids, especially a part in the back we're working on with HRSD. That curve up there is where they had three sixteen-year-olds get killed a couple of years back, but I don't know, it was twenty nineteen or something like that. That was, that was really sad. So it's a dangerous road just all the way around.
And that future sidewalk there in the light blue, it, speaking of ditches, I mean, that either side of that road is a deep ditch. If you're on that, just walking that road, you gotta get out of the way, you're jumping in a four-foot ditch.
Or the, or the creek.
Or the creek, right. Uh just in case it factors any into any of your equations, I just, I just shared a message with Rossi Carroll about where you see the orange is at with existing sidewalk, there's a with that purple, the Villa Way sidewalk, there's a crosswalk already to get into, yeah, to, right to the right of there.
Right here.
Yeah, right. There's a crosswalk to get over to Tab, Tab Middle School. And I met with a couple of homeowners there, and their concern is that the crosswalk's there, which is great, but they really are hoping for some flashing signage. Yeah, and I, and I spoke to Rossi about that, you know, what would it take to make that happen? Because what you, what this doesn't show is coming from left to right, there's, there's a rise there. And if you're coming at it at speed and you got like a small kid walking across, you're not seeing that till it's too late. So we're hoping we can get some flashing lights in that too, which I guess is the same thing you're
Yes.
You're proposing. So that way we're matching both ends. So that's, this is, so that's a timely, so anyway.
And just in the last week.
Also, one, one last bit. If you're not familiar with this area, a longstanding problem. Tab High School's here. Okay, this is uh Victory Boulevard, Tab High School.
Tab Middle.
Tab Middle. Tab Middle School.
Mount Vernon.
Mount Vernon. So if you, in the morning, have to go to work, you're stuck.
Don't go that way.
That's right.
Just, just trying to get down, get down to Mount Vernon. I mean, that, that's tight.
It's really back to you. Does this meet the needs of what you were?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, because in the future, this, I'm looking at the future here. Future boards, we're applying the money. What's gonna happen here? See, this road here is gonna be built in on uh smart field funds, okay, part of VDOT. And it's supposed to run all the way down to the coast. Right now, it's a funding issue just come up, so they're gonna stop it probably down in near Running Man, somewhere near St. Cuz, it's called St. St. Clair. But at least provides a trail. This is a bit a little smaller. But the, to me, the important part is something's gotta be done about this road here. Okay, and you know, I think what happens is this is the start for a sidewalk one side or another down to here. Um they take it all the way down to Calthrop Neck, right, that in the future. Because there's more houses gonna be built in there, unfortunately. It's just, to me, that's the way it is because Smith Farms over there, seventy-seven acres, something like that. And eventually that will come up for for development.
Tom, does the HRSD park all that trail? Does that help the runners get off Yorktown Road? They running that instead?
This is gonna be pretty awesome. And um and thanks for all the great work on it. Like what's happening here, the way we got this, they, they are actually, HRSD's building it for us. In fact, that was part of the proffer. So they got the fire department here, they got this uh um sewage holding station. It's a pressure-reducing station. I won't go into all that. But these state, what these, what this does is all these roundabouts gives you routes to to run kind of cross-country. And it's, some of it's got really wooded and it's really pretty. Some of it's just bare, but it's okay. And it runs, some of it runs right along the edge of the uh of the two-point-three-million-gallon tank. But it's still, it's, it really provides a good uh
Yes, yes, there'll be workout equipment along the trail as well. And it's complete, and the cross-country team is already using it.
Oh, they are. That's great. It's, it's really a nice setup. It really is.
Terry, you gonna have cameras out there?
To answer Ms. Noel's next question.
Not planned right now.
We are, we are making, on, it doesn't cost anything to ask, so we're asking Dominion if we can um insert some gardens, community gardens under the.
Community gardens in there, like we did down at the.
The power line. So we don't have to take any other trees down. We might make it. Doesn't cost anything to ask, so we're asking.
And they're gonna put some more trees in there too, so just to shield the.
They are, quite a, quite a few.
This is a good deal.
So a real quick question, where the, I guess the fuchsia line comes in and ties into the black line.
Right here.
Yes.
There's a crosswalk.
That's a crosswalk, okay.
There's a little, it's hard to see, but there's a little bend there.
And I know the black line is on this side.
It's on the church side.
Right. So I figured there'd have to be another crosswalk. So I guess I guess my point is that we'd have those beacon flashers on all of those crosswalks. So you don't, yeah.
That's why probably everybody's really dangerous.
It's new requirement.
Dangerous curve.
That, that turn, yeah, you ain't, you ain't good. Really dangerous.
Right.
Yeah, it's that Taylor Farms Road, so you're picking that whole subdivision up.
Right.
There.
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, it's great.
Because that goes all the way to Taylor Farms, so we were able to get the easement on that other church across the street, because that was a issue at one time.
We, we, we're working on that.
That'd be marvelous.
At the very least, we could walk across the grass, but.
Okay. Any more questions?
That's very good.
Yep, that's good, yep.
Thank you very, very much for that. That's something that's been needed for a long time. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. First one, number three is the approval of minutes. Number four is tax refund, the veterans exemption. Number five is tugboat and barge services for the fireworks show, Fourth of July. Uh number six is AI, is that AI? AI powered CCTV sewer, oh, that's the, the line that goes up. That's a great thing. Sewer footage analysis with the GIS integration. That's, I'll come watch that. Uh seven is appropriation of stormwater local assistance fund, SLAC, which we have had many SLAC grants um for the county, so that's great. Number eight is appropriation of stormwater local assistance fund, another SLAC, SLAC grant. And that's the lock and run stream restoration project. Anybody care to pull any of these?
Have number six, please, for, for discussion.
Number six for discussion, okay?
During seven.
Number seven. Okay. So who's gonna cover those?
Uh the AI.
AI?
I like that.
And Mr. Wyatt has been in on this as well, so Tim, if you'd like to come up as well.
So as you uh, I've mentioned it before, per the HRSD consent order and mandates, we are uh responsible for scoping a certain amount of our sanitary sewer line. And uh with IT, we've got some infrastructure people over in our department. Um we were starting to look at AI and how we could use this technology. And with their support and implementation, we're gonna, we're gonna run with this one. So what it basically is, is you have a box of a hundred and fifty to two hundred hours of video that you take in this box, and then in this box, you've got artificial intelligence and you're gonna put the video into that box. And it's gonna geotag the locations where you need repairs. And it's gonna take that and it's gonna overlay it on a GIS system, so we'll know right where it is. So in the net wash, the old way and the new way, it's about a wa, an uneven wash, but we're not gonna have to spend those hours of looking through all that, that tape. And when it, when it gets done with the AI, it's gonna give you a, a grading of repairs to be made, whether it's of I'll call it a, a yellow repair, or an orange is worse, and then a red is like, you know, you gotta take care of this. So once we get it all in, to help us strategically be able to make repairs and not have to we can triage it, so it's a, it's a budget, it's a positive for the budget. And then we don't have to um rely on so much on pump stations and wet weather incidences. And you, sometimes you get to where you look for repairs. Now, if you're gonna ask me how the bits and bytes and binary servers and iCloud storage, I'm gonna have to refer it to my expert. That's what we're gonna use it for.
All right, so we're going to use this technology eliminate the need to have a person look at video to determine if something needs to be addressed.
Right.
So we save their time. We're probably getting more consistent um feedback because it don't have a tired eye or somebody gets distracted as the video's rolling, because you gotta have a machine doing all that. So we're probably getting some better results from that too. And and I'm, now I'm gonna ask Tim about, all right, so we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna feed this video from our lines, right? So what do we, so how, how are we training that model? What are, what are we gonna train it against? How, how do we train it to say, all right, you've got the video, now how do you figure out whether there's a problem? How, how are we training that model?
So this is where we partner with the industry partners, and they handle all of it. Their AI is already specifically trained. It's not like the generic Swiss Army Chat GPT, Google Gemini. This is completely trained for nothing typing. It's AI to detect these specific things. So we take the videos, then it would take many people, and like you said, the accuracy of just the dull monotony of just staring at sewer footage for days and days. It's not what human beings are meant for. The AI is gonna roll through it. It's specifically designed for that. Pick it up, give us the report. And then the county owns the data the whole time. It's, part of it's on Amazon Web Services, part of it's on Azure Web Services. And then it integrates with our GIS mapping layers for sending people out into the field.
There's no new manpower requirements on our side to be able to do this. Okay, because that was not spelled out.
Okay, sorry about that.
All right, so, so we're gonna, we're using their, their data pool of examples everywhere across the country, across the world, of pain points. So it, that's how we're gonna train it to look for issues in, in our system.
Correct. It's already fine-tuned, has multiple customers, already does this, and we give it our data. Now, of course, it's going to get a little bit better.
Add it to the collective, right? And that's, that's fine. That's how it works, so.
It's fascinating.
That's good. I mean, this is what we need to do. We need to, we need to lean on this technology to, that's where, we can't just as soon as you have people to staff do this work, we gotta lean to this technology. So I'm, I'm, congratulate you guys for going after it. We should be the leader in the area for doing these things.
Well, and if I can add one more thing, this initiative was highly pushed by Public Works. That's one of the kind of strategies York County is taking, rather than just it being a purely IT initiative. We're kind of the, train the trainers. We go out, we worked with HR Economic Tourism Development. And DBW is the one, you said, we know our operations, we know where the manpower cost is. They initiated this, they engaged. Now, again, hand in hand with my staff and working cooperatively, not being siloed. So it's something I think I'm very proud of and, and happy how DBW took the lead in our AI roadmap for you guys. That is one of our big things, is the flagship, and we knew this was coming up. So we wanted an AI flagship that really helped out on operational efficiency, and I think this is, can do a great job.
Yeah, we're moving to interesting times where now the IT folks that have some level of proficiency in public works, I need public works folks comfortable with using this new technology to do their job that they used to do manually. It's interesting times we're moving into, so. Good job.
Thank you very much. Uh Tom, I think you asked for number seven.
I, I did say seven. Actually, I meant eight, eight.
Celestial Way or?
Yes.
Celestial Way. Lock and Run. Lock and Run, uh-oh.
You wanted seven?
No, no, you said, you said eight.
Are you gonna trade?
Yeah, okay, let us back up. I wanted eight.
There you go.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's celestial way.
Right.
That's seven.
That's seven. It says right here, eight. It says eight, map, Celestial Way.
Look at this.
What you're looking at.
I'm looking at the agenda that we've.
We're setting the Celestial Way at lock-and-run.
Whatever one you want, Tom, what you want.
The one on Celestial Way is 8B on our, 8B on our map, okay? It's stream restoration.
Yes.
Okay. So the question I have on that is I, this stream restoration looks like it runs from Big Bethel Road and then comes down through the neighborhood, and then it just crosses what I think is, might be Heaven's Way, I'm not sure what that road is, maybe Celestial Way. And then, then it's, I thought it was supposed to then proceed on it down through the rest of that property and go out towards Victory Boulevard.
So this one, the main push of this one was to stop the flooding up on, on Big Bethel?
Right.
And then through Celestial Way, which was formerly, I'm going to say it.
Oh, flooding is not on Big Bethel.
The lot's property.
Wait a minute, hey, the flooding's not on Big Bethel, the flooding curve is down here at the bottom, because what this is, you don't show the map, but if you see, look at the map, what happens this upper part is the old prehistoric beach, okay? And then it drops down to the ocean part, and so that's why it comes off pretty quick. So it comes out from about 25 feet, or maybe, you know, about 25 feet, then it gets down here to, very quickly, it's getting down to about 10, 15 feet, and it keeps getting lower. The problem is down here at the bottom.
They're concerned with Redeemer Way.
Is that down at the bottom, you know, is where the floods, because it, right now, you know, even though they dug a, a BMP in there, it's always full. I mean, it's always full. I don't understand why you dig a BMP in, it's always full of water. So the point is, are you going, how is this going to go south of there?
Um, it's, it does not go south of there.
Doesn't make any sense.
But the, the pipe on the, under 171 is a VDOT pipe.
All right, I'm not talking about that, I'm going under 171. I'm talking about going, I guess it would be south of the neighborhood as you turn and go towards Victory Boulevard.
Right.
That, that stream runs through there, and I thought that was supposed to be part of the restoration.
There is some, some work to be done in there. I don't know the exact parameters. I can get those for you, though.
Okay, well, I just, I mean, I don't understand, look at this, it doesn't, just, it takes it down, the water down in through the neighborhood, and I understand that. I mean, the, the way it was originally, because it would be kind of flooding the neighborhood. So what exactly are we going to do there?
So we get TDML points for it, to, for reduction of pollutants. We get the matching SLAF grant. So the question is, is coming through there with a stream restoration and then getting the water from Big Bethel Road, but keeping it from moving too quickly with check dams and spill.
Okay, that's what I, my question.
So you've got to slow the water down, you know, the slower the water, the less erosion you get and the less pollution, so it's a, and it's going to help the neighborhood drain, but I can get you the parameters, because there is some work, I believe, behind that church.
We talk about Lutheran, that's the Lutheran church there, right? Okay. I guarantee you what's going to happen down here, and we, we battled over this over the years, this neighborhood's going to flood, okay? Guaranteed, there's no, there's no way, in fact, that is why VDOT will not accept the road on the southern part of this neighborhood, because it, it will not meet VDOT parameters because of the flooding. So I can just see, this is going to be a future problem for another supervisor, but I'm, I'm going to tell you why, this is, this is going to be a problem, okay? We can try to clean this dig up, but it's going to be a, a problem. Go ahead, perfume poured all over, still going to be a problem. All right.
We got the opposite problem, lock and run, the, the way the water comes through there so fast, it's just eating, eating the dirt away. I mean, we've got, we've got trees falling down and so.
Those sidewalks are going to be replaced, the one from Joel Lane.
Okay.
See how this works.
Any more discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Sure.
The motion made by Mr. Holright is to approve the consent calendar as submitted. Mr. Holright?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yeah.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Knoll?
Yes.
Lieutenant Carey?
Thank you very much. Okay, now it's open discussion. Have we had enough discussion, or do we still have more that we'd like to add tonight?
I think we've had enough discussion.
I want to stay here longer.
I just, I just, I just want to do a quick, quick announcement that we are still looking, and this is for mainly the TV audience, we're still looking for qualified applicants for the York County Youth Commission for, for next year. So please, if you have a good applicant, child, grandchild, somebody you know, please encourage them to put application in. Just look up York County Youth Commission on the website, and it'll take you right to where you need to find the application.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else have anything? Okay, then I will say that the meeting is over, we'll adjourn, but I wanted to say that York County Board of Supervisors will host the town hall meeting Thursday from 7:00 to 9:00 at the Law Enforcement Building in the community room. And we also have another meeting.
What's the purpose, what's the purpose of the meeting? What's the purpose of the meeting, town hall?
It's a listening session.
For what?
For the budget.